Good evening. Today is January the 25th, 2022, and it's as a board study session for COVID-19. I would like to call the meeting to order, and I would like to ask Ms. Kaber to please lead us in the flag salute.
What shall we do?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0 and a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. Okay, we're going to start with a public comment. The first person we're going to hear from tonight is from Ralph Levy, and he has six minutes. Natasha Imani has ceded her time. You may begin.
You repeat the name.
Ralph Levy. Ralph is muted.
You're on mute.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I was muted while I connected. Thank you all for having this session. I think it's extremely important to have to have this topic discussed. So I think someone, I mean, I just joined, but I think I have an additional three minutes, right?
Yes.
Do I?
Yes.
This is Robin Ross. For some reason, it says WSP. I'm not sure how to change that or how it keeps getting there, but I am going to cede Ralph a few, like, three of my minutes. Hi.
Well, Ralph, you have six minutes. You have Natasha Imani has ceded her time for you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So I just have one question to start this is, are we trying to protect our students as a community with a vaccine? And it's a good intention, I agree, but what do the fact tells us? Three elements of response that we can know together. First, unto the CDC, the fatality rate for children from COVID-19 nationwide is 0.00003%. So that does a couple more zeros than last time we spoke, actually. And the state average of California on a seven-day rolling basis is 0%. Accordingly, children are not warranted to be vaccinated for COVID-19. Secondly, pursuant to the CDC, the CDC director and Dr. Fauci, in his New York Times November 12 interview, the COVID-19 vaccine will not prevent infection of transmission of the COVID-19 virus, nor will it prevent serious injury, hospitalization, or death any longer. Therefore, the vaccine is no longer the best tool for prevention of transmission. It is now medical treatment at best, hence it cannot be mandated as treatment as a personal medical treatment pursuant to the state and federal constitutions. Three, pursuant to the FDA, the vaccine manufacturers and multiple scientists across the nation and the world, these vaccines pose grave risks of severe myacodalis, blood clotting, and neurological damage, to name a few, predominantly prevalent in adolescents. As such, the risks of taking the vaccine strongly and significantly outweigh the benefits, especially as it pertains to pediatric community. So to answer my initial question, except for a tiny fraction of students with comorbidities, our students do not need the so-called vaccine, especially since the risk to suffer more negative consequences is higher with a shot than with a virus. It is simply not in their best interest, but it should be a parent's choice. Parents who want to vaccinate their kids are free to do so. Parents who think the data is not there to vaccinate theirs should be able to make that decision as well. Thank you very much. I think I didn't even take three minutes, but that's okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levy. The next person that we're going to hear from is Marie Niemann. Marie, you have three minutes. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Before I begin, I'd like Ms. Shamsi to go after me because I'm doing an introduction to what she's about to say. Okay, I'm ready to begin. She's going to read a statement from Dr. Hamadi, and I'm introducing who he is. Dr. Hamadi has been a vocal advocate of COVID policy customization when it comes to our children. Importantly, Dr. Hamadi is a board-certified physician, an adjunct assistant clinical professor at USC Keck School of Medicine, where he serves as attending physician at LA County USC Medical Center. Previously, Dr. Hamadi served as assistant professor of ophthalmology at the University of Vermont School of Medicine and was a clinical scientific consultant to Novum Access Bridge Gap Ventures, Boston Consulting Group, Brifin Rose Kaplan, and DJFE Planet Ventures, and also co-founded a Vessena Pharma focused on cancer-stem cell targeted therapeutics. In his scientific career, Dr. Hamadi has co-discovered fetal blood-forming stem cells with Dr. Irv Wiseman at Stanford. He discovered cancer-stem cells in the brain at Caltech and invented a hydrogel for sustained-release topical drug delivery to the eye with Dr. Robert Langer at MIT. Dr. Hamadi earned a BS in Biological Sciences at Stanford, an MD from UCLA, a PhD in Biology from Caltech, and completed an internal medicine internship at Stanford Hospital, residency at the Wilmer Eye Institute at Johns Hopkins Hospital, a postdoctoral fellowship at Chemical Engineering and Drug Delivery at MIT, and a clinical fellowship in at the Massachusetts Eye and Ear Infirmary Harvard Medical School. Dr. Hamadi has received numerous awards and honors, including the Alcon Research Scholar Award and the Everheart Presidential Distinguished Lectureship from Caltech. He also is a dad to two beautiful children.
Thank you, Marie.
And if I have any additional time, I cede that to Ms. Shamsi.
Thank you. Ms. Shamsi, Nikki Shamsi, you have six minutes.
And Janice Brenman ceded her time to you.
I was told that I can also, because I'm reading someone else's statement, that I may also get three minutes from that individual. Is that correct? That I can have a total of nine minutes?
No, we've limited it to six minutes.
Okay, so unfortunately, I'm going to have to cut this a little short. Okay, and I'll start now. Dear Board of Education, Dr. Bregge and BHUSD community, my name is Nikki Shamsi. I had the welcome opportunity to speak before you last week at the general board meeting, and I very much appreciated your positive feedback. I am a pharmacist with a lot of scientific information available to me, as well as the tools and backgrounds. You really sift through all such information in our ever-fluent environment. I am also the mom to two Hawthorne Elementary kids, so I have firsthand knowledge on the inapplicability and harmful impacts the burdensome and often far-reaching COVID-related policies have on our kids. Last week, I provided you with some information and statistics. Rather than repeat myself, I reached out to a dear friend, Dr. Huma Hamedy, to ask him what other information and studies he has to help us at this study session. Dr. Hamedy responded to me as follows, and I'm pleased to share the letter with you. It is as follows. Dear BHUSD Board of Education, although I am not a resident of Beverly Hills, I am very close to countless residents and several elected officials in Beverly Hills and have had for five years my office in Beverly Hills and was urged by a group of BHUSD parents to write you as a parent, local school activist, board-certified physician, PhD research scientist with a federal COVID research grant, and national media authority on COVID management in schools who speaks to millions of Americans weekly regarding my thoughts on vaccine mandates for children as well as COVID preventative measures, including indoor and outdoor masking, asymptomatic testing, and quarantining of COVID-negative asymptomatic kids, whether or not they are vaccinated. I will begin by addressing the recent Omicron surge. There is a great deal of fear because the case counts are very high due to Omicron's very high level of spread. Masks and vaccines simply are ineffective against it and increased level of testing as well. However, please keep in mind that serious illnesses with Omicron are far lower than with prior variants and that it presents in healthy kids mostly as a mild or medium cold or even as an asymptomatic infection. I have recently published on this variant. Because of these facts, whatever measures we look against prior, we took against prior variants are no longer as necessary because it is simply not as deadly. Additionally, data prove that COVID does not cause deaths among healthy kids, even including all the prior more deadly variants as well as the pre-vaccine era. California Public Health shows that only 31 school-age kids in California have died with, not necessarily of, a COVID infection since the pandemic began in March 2020. The data are here. With Omicron, it's far, far less deadly. The kids who did die of COVID were all already very sick with other diseases that predisposed them to death. They were not healthy to begin with. The CDC just published a major study proving that kids hospitalized from COVID are mostly obese and/or very sick. I encourage you to read it. Regarding masking, it has now been proving that anything less than an N95 mask cannot prevent transmission of COVID. Cloth or surgical masks are totally useless and, in fact, harmful to kids' social and language development. And N95 masks are for adults only, per the FDA. Plus, they have to be professionally fitted, so even slapping an N95 on a kid is pointless. These masks cannot be worn for longer than an hour or so, which would make them unfeasible at schools to begin with. Masking outdoors has also proven to be entirely useless as there is nearly no outdoor transmission, especially among asymptomatic individuals. Finally, regarding testing and quarantining, I urge that you end surveillance testing of asymptomatic kids. If a kid has symptoms, including a fever, a test could make sense, though I do not believe it does. But it is pointless to test everyone, especially in the age where Omicron comprises 99.7% of cases here. And when a kid is exposed, there is no evidence that there is any medical benefit to quarantining that kid at home. Even the California Department of Health agrees that both vaccinated and unvaccinated kids who are asymptomatic and COVID-negative should remain in school and not stay at home. Therefore, I strongly believe that we can safely peel off the mask mandates, unmask kids, and start transitioning back to normal now that the pandemic has evolved and we know that kids are already safe. Thank you very much, Dr. Huma Hamedy, MD/PhD. As a follow-up to this presentation, I will email you all to provide you with both my presentation from last week and Dr. Hamadi's letter of this evening, including our citations to widely-supported and accepted peer-reviewed medical journals, research articles, and other mainstream-accepted sources. Thank you for your consideration of the above and your desire to implement policies which will benefit our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki.
The next person that we'll hear from is from Sagali Sabha, and Marjana Nurey has ceded her time, so you all have six minutes. Again.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Now, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Good evening, board members, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would like to address the extremely concerning issue affecting our children, the staff, and the community at large. The issue is the mask mandates. There are three concerns. As parents, we have not been requested to be involved, consulted with, or have we been given our permission for BHUSD to act as the medical practitioners to treat or diagnose our children? Yet, the school has decided to take part in this extremely dangerous experimental action of forcefully demanding our children to cover their face with a mask indoors and outdoors as a prerequisite to attending BHUSD public school. As parents, we have not been asked to vote on the matter or have we been asked how we feel about our children wearing a mask for over six to eight hours a day? To the contrary, we have been forcefully burdened with such actions towards our children without our consent unlawfully. This has been allowed to continue with follow-up emails stating that the mask mandate is not up for discussion. This is absolutely unacceptable. Superintendent Dr. Bregge, along with every single board member here, must appreciate and understand that every single one of you are personally liable for forcing the mask mandates on our children against our will. The science has proven that the damage for covering a child's mouth and nose is far beyond health. It is mentally abusive and does not prevent viruses from spreading. To the contrary, it is harmful to the children and may result in health issues in the near future. The teachers and staff have taken this abuse to a higher level. The mask has caused chaos on campus. I don't know if you are aware of it. BHUSD mask mandates has given the green light to some of our teachers and yard aides to scream and punish our children without our consent. Our children, as the younger children, they don't know how to defend themselves, they cannot defend themselves. The older children have been trying to defend themselves, but with no prevail, so the parents had to get involved. I do not know if you are all aware what your illegal mask mandates have caused, and yes, it is illegal. In order for BHUSD superintendent and school board of directors to come to the conclusion to mandate masks to all our schoolchildrens, one must certainly conclude that all of you have done your research. You most definitely are not blindly following the failed LA County Health Department or being paid to continue with the mandates. As early as 2005, an experimental dissertation randomized crossover study demonstrated that wearing surgical masks in healthy medical personnel, 15 subjects, 18 to 40 years old, leads to measurable physical effects with evaluated transgression carbon dioxide values after 30 minutes. The role of dead space volume and CO2 retention as it caused a significant change in blood gases on the way to hyperkneia, which was still within the limits, was discussed in the U.S. National Library Medicine. Masks expand the natural dead space, nose, throat, trachea, bronchi, outwards and beyond the mouth and nose. An experimental increase in the dead space volume during breathing increases carbon dioxide retention at rest and under exertion. A total of 65 scientific papers on masks qualified for a purely content-based evaluation. These included 14 reviews and two meta-analyses of the mathematically valuable groundbreaking 44 papers with significant negative mask effects. 22 were published in 2020, and 22 were published before the COVID-19 pandemic. Of these 44 publications, 31 were experimental nature, and the remainder were observed studies. Most of the publications in question were English. 30 papers referred to surgical masks, 30 publications related to N95 masks, and only 10 studies pertained to fabric masks. Despite the differences between the primary studies, they were able to demonstrate a statistically significant correlation in the quantities analysis between the negative side effects of blood oxygen depletion and fatigue in mask wearers. In addition, it was found that the mathematical group's common appearance of statistical significant confirmed effects of masks in primary studies was shown. In nine of the 11 scientific papers, they found a combined onset of the N95 respiratory protection and carbon dioxide rise when wearing a mask. They found a similar results for the decrease in oxygen saturation and respiratory impairment evidence in six of the nine relevant studies. N95 masks were associated with headaches in six of the 10 studies for oxygen deprivation under N95 respiratory protection. They found a common occurrence in eight of the 11 primary studies. Skin temperature rise under masks was associated with fatigue in 50%. The dual occurrence of the physical perimeter temperature rise and the respiratory impairment was found in seven of the eight studies. A combined occurrence of the physical perimeters temperature rise and humidity moisture under the mask was found in 100% within six of six studies, with significant readings of these perimeters. An experimental setting with different mask types communicated surgical and N95 and significant increase in heart rate, a decrease in oxygen saturation with an increase in skin temperature under the mask, and a difficulty of breathing were recorded in 12 healthy young subject students. In addition, the investigators observed dizziness, listlessness, impaired thinking, and concentration problem, which were all statistically significant.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sagali, I'm sorry. Your time has been completed. Thank you very much for your comments. The next person that we'll hear from is Rifka Walchin, and your time, Iris Strauss, has ceded her time, so you will have six minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, and thank you so much for this new initiative that you've taken, where we can get together and do a study hall. Unfortunately, I would love if we could all do this in person, so we can have a discussion rather than have the same format that we're doing with our regular board meetings, but this is surely a positive step forward, so thank you, all of you. Tonight, I'm going to be reading you a letter I received anonymously from a teacher, and I'll be using my minutes for that. The letter goes as follows. "I am proud to be a teacher. I've worked in the school system for the past 15 years, mostly at the high school level. I don't claim to be a doctor or an expert in virology, but I spend my days with our youth, and they tell me a lot about their lives, and I want to tell you what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing. Since the beginning of the pandemic, when school went fully remote, it was evident to me that the loss of human connection would be detrimental to our students' development. It also became increasingly clear that the response to the pandemic would have immense consequences for students who were already on the path to long-term disengagement, potentially altering their lives permanently. The data concerning our youth about learning loss and the mental health crisis is devastating. Overlooked has been the deep shame young people feel. Our students have been taught to think of their schools as hubs for infection and themselves as vectors of disease. This has fundamentally altered their understanding of themselves. When we finally got back fully into the classroom, I was optimistic that things never returned to normal. When we were physically in school, it felt like there was no longer life in the building. Maybe it was the masks that made it so that no one wanted to engage in lessons or even talk about how they spent their weekend. It felt cold and soulless. In my classroom, the learning loss is noticeable. My students can't concentrate, and they aren't doing the work that I assign them. They have way less motivation compared to before the pandemic began. Some of my students have chosen not to come back at all, either because of fear of the virus or because they are debilitated by social anxiety, and thank goodness they now have the option to do virtual schooling from home. My students used to be able to eat in the halls or the cafeteria, now that's forbidden. Young children are expected to follow the mask-on rule and are made to wear their masks outside. And of course, outside of school, kids are going to restaurants with their families and to each other's homes, making the rules at school seem punitive and nonsensical. They are anxious and depressed. Previously outgoing students are now terrified at the prospect of being singled out to stand in front of the class and speak, and many of my students seem to have found comfort behind their masks. They feel exposed when their peers can see their whole face. Around this time of year, students are usually excited about graduating and which college they're going to. This year, they barely discussed it at all. When they do, my students say, if college is going to be just like this, then what's the point? I think all of my students are angry to some degree. I try to take time at the beginning of class to ask them how they're doing. Recently, one of my students raised his hand and said that he wasn't doing well, that he doesn't want to keep living like this, and that he knows that no one is coming to save them. The other kids all nodded in agreement. They feel lied to, and I can't blame them. What's most worrisome to me is that they feel deep worry and shame over the prospect of breaking the rules. I see that many of my students, especially the female ones, feel a heavy burden of responsibility. Right before Christmas, one of my brightest students confided in me that she was terrified of taking off her mask. She told me that she didn't want to get anyone sick or kill anybody. She was worried that she would be held responsible for someone dying. What am I supposed to say to that? That Sufu children have died from COVID during the whole of the pandemic? That kids in other countries largely haven't had to wear masks at school and haven't seen outbreaks because of it? That masks are not a magic shield against the virus, and that even if she were to pass it along to a classmate, the risk of them getting seriously sick is minuscule? I want to tell her that she can remove her mask and socialize with her friends without being worried, but I'm expected to enforce the rules. At the beginning of the pandemic, and adults shamed children for playing at the park or hanging out with their friends, we kept hearing, they'll be fine, they'll be resilient. It's true that humans by nature are very resilient, but they also break, and my students are breaking, some have already broken. When we look at the COVID-19 pandemic through the lens of history, I believe it will be clear that we have betrayed our children. The risks of this pandemic were never to them, and they were never forced to carry the burden of it. It's enough. It's time for a return to normal life and to put an end to the bureaucratic policies that aren't making society safer, but are sacrificing our children's mental, emotional, and physical health. Our children need life on the highest volume, and they need it now. That is the end of the letter, and thank you for giving me this time to read it."
Thank you very much.
The next person we'll hear from is Lisa Babcock, and you have three minutes.
Hi. So I'm writing, I would like to touch on what we were just talking about, the mask. I want to get into the psychological stress of the masks for children. So, as we heard before, this is taking a tremendous toll on our children. This is what I've heard from several parents who've asked me to speak for them. Some of the children feel embarrassed that they are ugly now. They feel that they're being made to cover up their face because they're not important enough to be seen. It's taking a toll on them, and now they are very nervous to be seen with their masks on at all, to take them off and to show other children. Children are now teasing children, saying, what do you look like under your mask? You're too ugly to show your face. This is very hurtful and harmful to our children. It's very psychologically stressing, and it also is taking a toll on them for their learning experience. Covering the lower half of the face of our teachers and children reduces the ability to communicate. By hiding teachers' lips and muffling their speech, mask-wearing makes it harder for children to develop their linguistic skills, not only for our younger children, who need it desperately to recognize speaking and learning how to say words, but also for our older children that are learning different languages. Being unable to rely on facial expressions and cues from teachers makes students more likely to misinterpret one another. Our young children no longer feel the joy and happiness from some teachers, and this is something that we want our children to feel every day. They are missing the connection with their teachers, and with the constant reminder to pull up your mask, it might be slipping under your nose, stopping of teaching, to scold them for not having their mask on, is causing them tremendous stress. Our children are losing the experience of seeing and mimicking expressions, which I said before, it's essential for them, especially learning nonverbal communication. Our children need to see joy and happiness and smiles, and they are not seeing that, and it is bringing them to a position where they don't feel that their teachers are that happy. And obviously, we want our children to feel joy every day at school. Positive emotions from teachers and classmates are no longer recognizable, and the negative emotion with being scolded is amplified. There is a big loss for our children to cultivate social skills when they can't see each other's faces. Bonding between teachers and children is lessened, which, as I said before, and again, the children are really nervous now that the teachers will be angry with them if their masks should fall to their nose or below their nose.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your comments.
The next person that we'll hear from is Rob Ross, and Me Too Rom has ceded her time, so you have six minutes.
Thank you. I would like to just say that if I do have any time remaining, that anyone that still needs to speak can use it. What I'm about to read was prepared by a medical doctor who is in our community and a parent in Beverly Hills Unified School District, and was not able to read her statement last week because the meeting had started 40 minutes late. I'm gonna begin. "Why are our children being masked outdoors? LA County Public Health has not mandated any masking outdoors. Why should, this should not be enforced on our children? They should have a choice whether to wear a mask or not outdoors. As a medical doctor and working in the medical industry, I know that COVID has taken the lives of our vulnerable population. Our healthy children have not been affected by COVID. The masking of children doesn't prevent viral transmission. The viral particles can be transmitted through all masking. We are in year two with the pandemic and have revealed that our children are not being severely impacted by COVID. The mandates for masking and treating the vaccinated versus unvaccinated differently must stop. Over 50% of the patients admitted in ICU hospitals are fully vaccinated patients. Children being vaccinated are also having adverse events that are critical, such as my growth chyditis, I have a hard time with that word. The children with COVID have mild symptoms and are not being hospitalized. More children are being hospitalized due to the vaccine adverse events. Many of these cases are going unreported. Schools should not become health officials. They should advocate choice and learn the clinically evidence-based research before mandating masks for children. If parents fear COVID, they should simply have their children do virtual school. Teachers can choose to mask or unmask. Furthermore, testing for COVID can have many false positive tests and should not be used unless a patient is showing symptoms of COVID. These tests are costly and many times have shown inaccurate results. The freedom of choice should be given to all students. Health and medical decisions are made by students' parents. School officials should remain as school officials. Leave the medical and health decisions to the parents and their medical providers." I'd also like to add that, myself, that I request that you return whatever COVID money you've received already and give it back. Just return it back, because these ridiculous protocols have to stop. The segregation, the coercion, and the abuse, it must stop immediately. What's it gonna take?
Thank you very much, Rob.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that that ends our public comments. Unless, is there anybody else? Okay, terrific. Thank you all for coming tonight and taking the time to be here and voice your opinions and concerns. We really appreciate it for coming here. To begin tonight, I would like to thank all of you for being here. I really appreciate the fact that all the board members are here, as well as our staff and admin. I see our principals, and I really, really appreciate that you took the time and made the time to be here. And I think, before we begin, the one thing I would like to say is, and to remind all of us, is that we're here to have a discussion about COVID. It's been a long haul, and everybody is really trying their very best, and that all of us here have the best intentions, and we all prioritize our children and their education and their well-being, and that's why we're here. And I'm really happy that we're having this discussion. I'd like to thank Gabe Halimi for bringing it up in our board meeting and creating this ability for us to come together and creating that focus for us to take the time out so that we can check in with our community, clarify any miscommunication or misunderstandings or misinformation, to share information and to review where we are at this time, but also always, at the same time, remembering that we are all here for the same reason, which is to do the best for our children and for our community. But also always, at, at the same time remembering that we are all here for the same reason, which is to do the best for our children and for our community. And it's really about improving and constantly improving on what we do. So with that, I would like to ask Gabe to begin since this was at his suggestion. And he's also prepared some information that he has on his own, spent some time researching. And I would just also give the caveat that the information that he's providing is information that he has researched on his own. And was not necessarily the reflection of this board, but information that he's brought to the evening. So that we have a starting place to jump off from in terms of the conversation. So without any further delay, I will now turn this over to Mr. Halimi. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. First, I want to start by acknowledging this, this board for very quickly acknowledging the need to have this conversation. And that we got this scheduled within a week and we're all here. I just really appreciate it and just echo the sentiment of. Mary, I think we all do put, put the wellbeing and, you know, safety and education of our, you know, students and children first and that's why we're here. I, I want to thank our community members, especially those that spoke tonight. I'm, I'm just blown away by the information that, you know, I have received, the engagement. You know, coming here, bringing your stories, bringing your facts. You guys are all a very necessary part of this process and so thank you for the engagement that you brought. And thank you to the administration for what you guys have already done, you know, but continue to do and being willing partners as part of this process to create a new policy. So without further ado, if it's okay Rebecca, can you, do, do, do I have access to share my screen?
You should.
Okay, great.
Rebecca?
How's that? Okay, great. As, as Mary said, full disclaimer here. These are my views, my opinions. I didn't put them together with anyone else. So these don't necessarily reflect the views of the board or the school district. These are my views. And I will repeat that at various times throughout this conversation, just in case someone tunes in at some point. It's like, hey, this is the view that the board is taking. No, that's, that's not. This is, I called for this meeting. I was very grateful that the board agreed to meet. And so I wanted to help facilitate the conversation tonight. And as I tend to do in my professional life and I'm applying it here, I tend to do like a deep dive into something when I become very passionate or care about it. And so I did a lot of research this weekend and I'm gonna try to get through some of this stuff quickly. And then towards the end, there will be some stuff that will be more my opinion, but we're really starting with what I hope are facts. So without further ado. Coronavirus, COVID nineteen, epidemic, pandemic, flatten the curve, lockdown. Quarantine, contact tracing, cloth masks, N ninety-five, KN ninety-five, surgical masks, intubation. Social distancing, Zoom, but essential workers. Hydrochloroquine, mRNA, Moderna, Pfizer, Booster, vaccine card, antigen. Symptomatic, asymptomatic, super spreader, Dr. Fauci. PCR test, rapid test, self-test, endemic. These are probably all terms that two years ago were not in our vernacular at all. The far majority of them are completely new to me. I want to start by just acknowledging how scary the last two years have been. I mean, we, we started not knowing anything about this virus. We just knew that people were dying. We were setting up tents outside of our hospitals. We were going to supermarkets and we were going to stores and shelves were empty. We were worried about running out of toilet paper and food in our houses and we were spraying down boxes coming into our homes. It was a really scary time and for very good reason. Millions and millions of people in this country have died. With deaths associated with COVID. We all probably know someone or know of someone who has died from an associated death. So I just wanted to start by saying like, I personally don't minimize. The danger that has been posed by this virus over the last two years. This was real and this affected, you know, millions and millions of people's lives. It ended millions of people's lives. So I don't, you know, I don't want anything that I say here to, you know, minimize how dangerous this virus was when it first came out. With that said, we put together protocols to keep our community safe. We put together protocols to keep especially our children safe. They were, they were our priority and we did the best that we could to keep them safe during that time. Thankfully now, we have two years of data. We have two years of learning. We have seen this, this virus go from something very, very, very scary to something very different today. And that's really what I want to start by talking about is what really does happen today. Or what has happened over the last two years, if our children are infected with COVID nineteen, are they in danger? And so what I wanted to do is I wanted to really start this conversation grounded in facts. And again, I'm so thankful for our community members that already had touched on this. First and foremost, we all know this today that a far, 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 far majority of the deaths that we have seen in our country. And there have been over ten million associated deaths in our country from COVID nineteen. Ninety-three percent of those were with people fifty and older. And we also know that many, many more great significant factors leading to those deaths were caused by pre-existing medical conditions. So if we really look at the population that this governing body is charged with protecting. You know, there are seventy-three million children, seventeen and younger in the United States, that's twenty-two percent of the population. There have been around sixty-three hundred deaths over the last two years. That's point zero six percent of all COVID deaths. That means that the survivability rate of this virus for our children. Is extremely, extremely high, ninety-nine point nine nine eight percent. And one more thing I'll note, on each page, there are citations. Most of it is to the CDC. And hopefully we'll get this posted later if the community wants to. If the community wants to see any of this. In California specifically, very similar story. There have been forty-seven children, child deaths. Associated with COVID over the last two years, forty-seven. So again, it's a point zero six of all of the deaths in California have been with our children. The survivability rate is ninety-nine point nine nine nine, right? Very, very high. Thank God, right, that this has not affected our children, you know, statistically speaking. Who is most at risk of COVID? What we have found, this is all CDC data so far. Eight out of ten, as we've already kind of indicated, well, we said sixty-five and older, eight out of ten. Ninety-three percent were fifty and over. On the right, these are the medical conditions that are actually exacerbating. And mean that people are vulnerable, right? Things like hypertension, things like obesity, things like diabetes. What we know today is that healthy people generally speaking, unless they are older, they don't die from COVID, thankfully. But that might not be, you know, as parents, as community members, we're not just worried about death, right? We, we also don't want to see our children hospitalized. So I also did some research into hospitalizations from COVID over the last two years. This is a cumulative view. The top line is people eighteen and over, right? People eighteen and over, one out of every hundred people in the United States. Has gone to the hospital and had some kind of an association with COVID. In the case of children, one in a thousand, okay? And that just means that they were at the hospital. I think there's a lot of questions about what hospitalization around COVID is. So I did a little research into this. I'm hoping that my audio will pick up here. Gonna get feedback. Can I play video? Is it gonna, is it gonna?
Yeah, you can, if you share your screen with audio.
So you might have to stop sharing.
Can you, can you show me? Sorry, everybody, one sec. Let me get out of this. So I go to Zoom and then I share.
Share and then share sound.
Share sound. Look at that. Thank you so much. Alright. Alright. Hopefully, everybody recognizes the face of this. Let me, let me try this again.
You can unmute your computer.
I should, okay. Apologies, everybody. I am, do I just need to turn my sound off? Okay, sounds on. Let's try this again. Nope, nope. We're not getting it, okay, well. As Dr. Fauci states in this video, and I'll paraphrase, is that people go to the hospital for all kinds of different reasons in the United States. Children will go to the hospital for broken, should I?
Yeah, turn it off.
It's playing. Is it? Let me, let me stop sharing and try one more time. If it doesn't work again, we'll just go. No, sorry. Okay, it's fine. I have a few videos in there. It's a shame it doesn't work, but. I will, I will just paraphrase and this, the LA Times article makes the same point. And that's that people go to the hospital for all kinds of different reasons. Every person that goes to the hospital in the US is then swabbed for COVID. So you could be at the hospital for a broken leg, you can be at the hospital for a pregnancy, you can be at the hospital for all kinds of different reasons. And they will swab you for COVID once you get to the hospital. That is why we even see a hospitalization rate the way we do for our children. Because children will go to the hospital for many reasons. They will swab them. And if they are there and they happen to have COVID, they're counted as hospitalization for COVID. That's the point. That, that's what Dr. Fauci says and that's what's, that is also mentioned in a LA Times article that happened to just come out yesterday or the day before. Where they noted the same thing. Although many patients are COVID positive, they're placed in the unit under precautions, they're here for different reasons. COVID isn't the primary reason for the admission. It's more of an incidental finding. So again, deaths are very low, hospitalizations thankfully, also very low. There's a lot of things that we can be concerned about, about our kids. And I just wanted to like understand for myself. How does it compare with things like pneumonia, for example, right? Like, you know, are, are children dying at the same kind of rate that you would hear someone die from pneumonia? It's a hundred and eighty-four percent more likely that someone in the United States will die from pneumonia. Than they will, you know, die with COVID. Again, we don't even have data of who dies with and who dies from, right? Just the chance that they will die with COVID. I looked into car accidents, right? How many children in the United States die from car accidents every year? Again, over twice as likely that someone in the United States, a child is gonna die from a car accident than die from COVID. Like I just was trying to frame this for myself. So I think the conclusion that I've seen, and this is a lot of data from CDC. Is that generally speaking, what we see in children are thankfully flu-like symptoms when it comes to COVID. Especially the Omicron variant. When we look at the number of deaths in the United States from COVID, you can see that compared on the right-hand side to flu deaths in the United States. And it is very, very similar, right? Like in a bad flu year, there are far more kids that die from the flu than have died from COVID this whole time, right? So it's good to kind of ground ourselves. I also thought it was an interesting fact that I saw. I've heard a lot of concern about long COVID and whether we should be concerned about long COVID in our children. And there is some data that I've cited here that says it's, it's really not a major risk to children in the United States. Just has not, has not been so. So my conclusion, again, I will state, this is my conclusion. This does not reflect the views of the board or reviews of the school district. But statistically speaking, our kids are safe. They are not at significant risk when it comes to an infection from COVID, thankfully. So that's just the first kind of conclusion that I, that I started with. By the way, if anyone wants to stop and have a conversation, like this is more to ground us in conversation, I'm like trying to get through it so we can get to discussion. But if anyone wants to stop and talk about anything, even any of our administration, please feel free to stop me. I think we've heard from a lot of our community and we know this instinctually. That there are costs that our children are paying to protect them from infection from the virus, right? And we've, we have, we've talked a lot about this already tonight. We've heard from our community. So it begs the question whether the, those costs are proportional. To the risk that our children are actually facing from infection from this virus. There are a lot of these preventative measures that we have been asked to implement, right? These are not our policies. If we, as we noted in the last board meeting, they come from places like the CDC. And the California Department of Public Health and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. We have masks that have now been asked to not only wear them indoors, but wear them outdoors and different kinds of masks. We do all kinds of testing, you know, on our children. It affects the classroom experience. We've gone from remote, back to the classroom again. We have children all the time that are quarantined and need to try to learn from home. They're looking at a teacher, their teacher is masked that I, I think what we heard that tonight, the, the teacher's letter that was read. Just speaks volumes about the impact that this is having in the classroom and, and, and the feeling that it is leaving with the kids. And then of course also the vaccination. There is a lot that we are asking of our children.
Mr. Lee, I'm just sorry, can you just clarify the pictures of not BHUSD students?
The pictures are not BHUSD students. I just happen to find those online. So stock photography that I found online. Thank you. This is another video. Unfortunately, the video is not gonna play, so I will summarize what the video says. This is looking at policies around the country. There was an interview on MSNBC with a number of doctors around the country. Questioning the value of things like masks in the classroom, the kind of impacts that it's having. A lot of the same things that candidly we've heard tonight from our, but community already. So unfortunately, that won't work. I came across a Brown University study. That found that COVID rules or blame for a twenty-three percent dive in young children's development. It was an overall, it was a pretty disturbing study which showed that across three different sets of tests. That early learning, non-verbal development and verbal development were all down by around twenty-three percent over the last two years. And in there, they cited, you know, reasons like masks, reasons like the remote learning, stress, et cetera. By the way, this was a study for ages of kids five and under, so I just want to note, this was not for, you know, at the elementary and middle school kids. But I think it was very powerful overall to, 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 to see the data. I think overall the preventative measures, I mean, we know this instinctually, we've heard it from our community. But I, again, I think there's a lot of data out there that is showing us that this is really having a detrimental impact on our, on our kids. I did some research into the American Academy of Pediatrics. This is just a nice little visual I found. Where they said that wearing masks throughout the day can hinder language and socio-emotional development, particularly for younger children. I thought this quote from the New York Times was just very powerful because honestly, this is exactly how I feel. For the past two years, Americans have accepted more harm to children in exchange for less harm to adults. I think what we've seen from the I think what we've seen from the data is that, as I showed before, kids are not dying from COVID. Kids are barely being hospitalized from COVID. They are gener- they are the safest population in the United States. So asking the children to bear all of this preventative measures that we've been placing is really about, I think it, it seems as though to me that this is more about protecting other people than it is about protecting the children themselves. And they are bearing all of this weight on their shoulders and they are paying a price. One of, one of the prices that we paid, and I, I, I think I heard someone mention this statistic tonight. I've come across a lot of statistics over the last two days in doing this research. The CDC did a study into adolescent suicide. And over the course of the last, I think it's year, this is certainly during COVID, they have found a fifty percent rise in teenage suicide attempts specifically among girls. Fifty percent rise. We heard this mentioned, um I think it was Upper Rifka who read a, of a teacher's letter who said that, that one of our own students has said that they don't, I mean, it sounded like they were suggesting that they don't wanna live. This is, this is real, this impact that it's having. This is absolutely real. And just to frame it up, there was Boston's Children's Hospital does a lot of work into suicide attempts, and in two thousand nineteen, there were approximately twenty-six hundred teenage suicide deaths. I mean, you could just imagine with a fifty percent rise in attempts, the amount of people, the amount of children that could be dying from suicide can rival the number of children that even die from COVID. I mean, it's, it is, it is that bad.
Gabe?
Yeah.
Can I ask?
Sure.
We have a lot of staff that came tonight, and in the interest of their time and respecting their time, I wonder if we could go back to your presentation as needed with information that you have and perhaps start the conversation. Uh, because we're an hour into the meeting and people have just been sitting, um.
If I, I, I.
I don't wanna burn staffs.
Sure, if the staff has something that they wanna bring forward at this time, sure.
Talk to them about.
Sure.
So I just, I just was wondering, maybe hit the, hit the high notes here, um possibly, and then we, you can refer back as a.
Let me, what, why don't you, why don't you give me another ten to fifteen minutes? I will power through this very quickly. And then we can start the conversation. Is that okay? Is that okay with everybody? Thank you. So I believe as a school district, it is our top priority to protect the mental, social, emotional health of our students. One of the most important points that I think I wanna make here in the interest of time, as Noah said, we are the last line of defense for our students. There is CDC policy that is for protecting Americans. There is California Public Health Policy that's to protect the health of all of California. There's the LA County's Department of Public Health that's interested in protecting the lives of the county. We are the only governing body that is here to protect the kids. If we don't stand up for the kids with all of these different, you know, factors that are affecting, these preventative measures that are affecting their mental, social, emotional, mental wellbeing, if we don't stand up and actually take action, nobody is going to take action for our students. We are the only ones that are only, our sole responsibility is to protect the students of our community. So the, the data is overwhelming. I will have the data available for anyone to share, for anyone to see. My conclusion, my personal view, I think the preventative measures that we are taking to COVID, the dangers posed by those preventative measures greatly outweigh the dangers to our children of infection from COVID. That's the bottom line. We have to readjust our priorities in light of the negative impacts that these preventative measures are having on our children. What about the teachers? We love our teachers. We also have a responsibility to keep our teachers safe. I saw this little image, the Teachers Make the World Smile on my drive-in, and I had to put it in. I loved it. Um, it was just in the driveway of the, of the school. Thankfully, the vaccination is highly effective against Omicron. It is saving lives. It's not helping so much with the transmission, but it is certainly saving lives for people that are sixty-five and over and people that have those underlying medical conditions that we have seen. So our, thankfully, our teachers, our staff, adults are in a position that they can protect themselves. And we no longer have to put the burden on our children to protect them. And for the people that are most vulnerable among us, there is a lot of focused protection that they can be taking at this point to protect themselves. Again, the burden should not be on our children, but all of this data will be available for, for people to see. So why haven't our policies changed? There was a great segment on Face the Nation that again, I would have, I would have loved to share, but people are not gonna be able to hear it. That talks about, this is the most under-reported story, maybe not of the last year or of the last, it's really of like the last decade, how we have not done more to protect the youth of America from the kind of preventative measures that we have taken. Quick case study. You look at Israel, population of nine million. They were the first country in the world to massively up and immunize their population. They were the first to introduce vaccine passes. They were the first to implement a lot of this stuff in, in classrooms, you know, masks, et cetera. They're now on their fourth booster. What is happening in Israel today? They were, they are at ninety-nine percent of their all-time peak for daily infections. It has not worked. People are getting infected regardless. There is no country on earth that has done more preventative measures in place than Israel. They're at ninety-nine percent of their all-time peak as of, I think it was, um, but two days ago. There is an interview with the top expert, the, the guy that advises the Israeli government on their policy. Great interview. I put the link at the bottom. Um, these are his conclusions. Vaccine passports, the concept is no longer relevant because you cannot stop the transmission. They were surprised and they were disappointed, the doctors in Israel, that they could not stop the transmission. The widespread infection is now an inevitable part of future immunity. Vaccines will not be enough, was his conclusion. People will get the virus and they need to get the virus at this point to have the kind of herd immunity that we actually need. Um, and I wanted to highlight the part in red and the quote at the bottom. Of all the things he said, and it was a thirty-minute interview, his number one regret, he said the biggest mistake that he thinks they made, and he was part of the decision, was shutting down the schools and the impacts that they had on education. I'll just read the quote. There's one mistake, I think we made it, that I'm extremely sorry for that. We have a few mistakes, but it was education. For me, education was the one thing that we shouldn't have touched. Never, never. That's the top, uh, that expert in Israel on COVID policy. We see around the world that the tides are changing. The UK just over the course of the last week said that they will no longer have face masks in classrooms at all. They're gonna start trusting the judgment of the British people. So I think this begs the question, should our children, should the most vulnerable citizens in our community who don't have a vote for themselves, should they be paying this price for adults? What is the right thing that this board can start doing for our children? Again, my personal views, this is not the views of the board, this is not the views of it, the, the school district. The point that I'm making is no government body is going to put the holistic wellbeing of our children first. That is our job. And we need to, and I'm ecstatic that we're here to start setting some of that policy to put our children first. We're sitting on a number of different crises for our children that we've highlighted, learning, health, emotional, psychological. Um, and the correction from the government bodies is not coming fast enough. If anything, I think we're seeing a doubling down by some of those governing bodies. And I think we have to act swiftly and we gotta push back. And we need to start putting all the options on the table and making informed decisions. This is my proposal. This is where I think we start tonight. I think we look at where we actually have to have strict compliance with the rules that are out there. There are some black and white rules from the LA County Department of Public Health. There are other rules that are not black and white rules. There are places where we can start to apply our discretion as a school district and as a, as a minimum. That is what we should start doing right now. We should start looking at where are those areas that we can take a stance, that we can better protect our kids, we can stop putting this burden on them. And I think that that's the first place we need to start. After that, we weigh all the options. We look at all of the options in front of us. Including if that means not being in compliance with the LA County Department of Public Health. But I think it starts with number one, and I think it starts with number two, putting our kids first. I wanna give an example to make this more tangible. And that's with, and that's with outdoor masks. Today, we have, we have implemented a requirement that our children wear masks outdoors. I believe that's still the policy as of today, as far as I know. I believe that outdoor masks should be the exception and not the rule. I looked at what the underlying rules are for the, for the California Department of Public Health and the LA County Department of Public Health. Under the California rule, masks are optional, period, the end. That is the most updated rule from the state of California. It is the LA County Department of Public Health that, that takes this a bit further. And you can see the first bullet. This is the required procedure as of the, you know, new surge protocols. And it reads, student and staff are required to wear masks in outdoor spaces unless eating or drinking in any crowded setting where physical distancing cannot be easily or reliably maintained. That is a decision that we have to make. That's a judgment call. That is discretion that we can apply as a board. We can decide when we think that physical distancing cannot be easily or reliably maintained. This is just one example of what I am talking about. These are areas that we can apply our discretion as a board, and we should start taking decisions to better protect the children of our school district from some of these really painful preventative measures that we're seeing. In the future, these are just suggestions for guiding policy principles that we should have. We should start every conversation with what is in the best interest of our children, not what is the rule, not what is some other government agency who is more concerned with a lot of other people's interests and not the interests of our children. What is the best for our children? Are they taking into account the social, emotional, psychologically, psychological wellbeing? What is the risk and reward of the policy that is being, that we're being asked to implement? That should be the first thing that we start every policy decision thinking about. Then we should be making data-driven decisions. We should collect the data, we should understand what it means, we should engage our community. We should start making decisions based on data and not what another government agency is necessarily asking us to do. Um, I believe we should also have a policy where we start implementing a self-determined risk tolerance for infection. We should engage with our parents. We should engage with students, and we should give more flexibility for people to start making their own decisions. If a child feels the need to wear a mask outside, they should wear a mask outside. If they want to go out and get a vaccination, get a, if they are uncomfortable being at school one day and would feel much more comfortable because they see a surge or the kid sitting next to them coughed, or if they're just nervous, we should have a more flexible policy that maybe a kid should be able to, to, to be home one day if they are so concerned about their health. There are, we, we have created a culture of fear among some of our students. Some of our students are actually fearful and think of themselves, as someone else said tonight, as a vector of infection. They think they're gonna be responsible for, God forbid, their grandparents' death. And they don't want that on their shoulders. They wanna keep away. We have to start giving people options, and it's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all. And where necessary, I really believe as a board, like I said, we're the only ones that are standing in the way of these policies coming from other governing bodies and our children. We have to take stances, and where it's necessary, we have to push back. I will note that I had an excellent series of conversations with Balili Bossi, um, who is one of our city council members. As many people know, she took a very firm stance against, you know, potentially creating our own health department for Beverly Hills because it's been so painful trying to implement some of the rules of the LA County Department of Public Health. She is a very willing partner and very willing participant in looking at uh, these issues and how to deal with the LA County Department of Public Health with us. The, the, she made very clear that, you know, she can't speak for the whole city, but to the extent that she can be with us and looking at this stuff, she's absolutely uh, with us, and if, if we feel the need to push back, she will be with us to do that. I think I did that in under, in under fifteen minutes. I tried to, so I'm, I apologize. I think everyone could see my, my passion. Once I start kinda digging into an issue, I think I made clear where my positions are and uh where I believe we should be going from here, so I pass back to Mary. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Um, uh, I would like to actually just survey the board because I believe um, that we, we haven't actually started our discussion, and we do have people here that are um available for us to have this discussion. But at the same time, I also feel that many people in the community are also watching and you know, paying close attention to what's going on tonight. And I think it is of value to briefly just review where we are today with our protocols because oftentimes, things have changed, or people might have information from, you know, two weeks ago, a month ago. And just to start as a baseline of where are we today with our policies so that we're all clear and the community is clear, just to clarify that. I know we communicated in many different ways. And we often, this, this chart gets updated on a regular basis, but I still think uh we hear information uh, in many different ways, and sometimes we only actually listen to it once. So um, if you uh all will agree, if we can have a quick uh, brief review from Rebecca of just where we are on the policies so that we're all on the same page. I think that might be beneficial. Does everyone agree?
Does she agree?
Do you agree? Alright.
She's happy to do that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Should be on? There we go.
There you go.
Hi, everyone. Okay, since we last met at the previous board meeting, the county was really fun giving us a new T-one, a new T-two, a new surge protocol and a new framework. So that has been synthesized into a new graphic, and if you are wondering at home, they all keep changing. How do I know I have the most recent one? If you have a look at your graphic and it has a little symbol with a mask on it with a check or a cross mark through it, you have the most recent one. We added some symbols this time, okay? So I'm gonna fly through this. If you have COVID, whether you are vaccinated or unvaccinated, you all have the same rules that we have, which is the yellow circle in the middle. Is this gonna be helpful? Actually, can someone who has this share their screen?
I could, uh, is it on the website?
It's on the website.
I think that would be great.
Okay, I've done it.
There we go.
Okay, so.
She does it all.
So the yellow circle is someone who is positive for COVID nineteen. They need to do a full isolation at home for five days. On day five, they can take a test if they are asymptomatic and they are fever-free without the help of fever-reducing medication for twenty-four hours. And if they are negative on day five, that person is eligible to return to work and to school, so it applies to both students and staff on day six or afterwards. If you're still testing positive, which is common, it's very, very rare that someone is testing negative by day five, if you're still testing positive on day six, seven, eight, nine, or ten, then you are not able to return. However, if you test negative, you can come back, and on day eleven, if you're still positive, you can also return per the county guidelines. This is also the same for the state and for the CDC. Any questions on our yellow circle?
Uh, I just wanna clarify, so
Yeah.
So, so, so those rules as stated in the yellow,
Mm-hmm.
Those are rules from the LA County Department of Public.
Correct.
Right, like, we're not, okay.
No BHUSD, well, um, COVID administrators are ours.
Right, of course.
Yes. Um, so that is per school site broken down, uh, but the rest of it is one hundred percent. The only thing that's not from the CDC that is from us, as in LACDPH, not BHUSD, is the fact that in a school setting, you have to wear a mask at all times, indoors, outside, sports, and everything else. If you're between that day five and day ten window after having recovered from COVID.
If you're within, so, so you come back to school, you test, if you test negative,
Yep.
let's say on day six and you're back at school.
Yep.
Then you have to, but you have to wear a mask anyways, right?
Correct. I'm just being transparent with you in answering your question.
Excuse me, do they tell you how many days that you must wear the mask after you test negative?
Until day ten.
So, let's say at day 11, if you're back, then you don't need to wear the mask or that you're not required at that point.
Under the LACDPH protocol for, which I'm hearing is obviously up for discussion on, from what I'm hearing from some board members, um, the interpretation by BHUSD on the county order is, it's about where physical distancing is feasible. And whether we deem that to be feasible or unfeasible, it was deemed unfeasible for us for kids to be physical distancing. I'm not here to say whether that's true or not. That's where we are right now. Um, so those students, let's say we said everyone could stay six feet, uh, six feet apart when they were outside at all times. Then the students who were recovering from COVID would not be able to take their mask off on day six, seven, eight, nine, or 10. Does that make sense? If in an imaginary world, we allowed outdoor masking and, and we were able to do that, those students would not be able to do that.
Uh, that, under the county's rules.
Correct. Yes.
Can I also just add though, that, so, and, and that's new because this, this new order after winter break is, is when the outdoor masking due to feasibility uh, was placed in the order. So it wasn't in the order uh, before winter break.
Right.
I mean, it was a long time ago, and then it went away, and then that, that was part of the changes with the uh, L.A. County Department of Public Health order upon return after winter break.
So yellow circle is the same from the previous board meeting to now, but has changed since, if you haven't caught a board meeting, it has changed since winter break. Okay. Orange, top left-hand corner. This is where things have changed significantly since the previous board meeting. So previously, the county really looked at students under the umbrella of e-everyone, by the way, everyone who's a close contact, you must be asymptomatic to fall into any of their categories. The minute you are symptomatic, you are no longer considered under this framework. Does that make sense? I just want to get that out of the way. So asymptomatic, unvaccinated students, we're now just talking about students, who have exposure without a mask, this is where the new language comes in, because it's without a mask. Before, it didn't really matter if they had a mask on or they didn't have a mask on at the time of exposure. But if it's a mask off exposure and you're asymptomatic and you're unvaccinated, according to the new framework from the county, you would have to quarantine. However, there's a group framework here, for group tracing, and we spoke at length, and I have it in writing, from Dr. Kim and from all of LACDPH. We had a phone call with them. And this framework was developed because there's a huge testing shortage. And we have an extremely robust testing program, both an antigen program for kids who are exposed and also in addition, the weekly PCR program. And so we said to them, what about if we allowed our students who were exposed without a mask on to return to school and stay in school if they tested every day before school? Because we really, really have said from the beginning, that I've heard from the board, that I've heard from Dr. Breggy, we're trying to keep kids in school. We're trying to keep schools open, and we're trying to keep kids in school and not on an unnecessary quarantine. And so they approved that modification for us if we had the robust testing to be able to do it on a daily basis. This is new. So as you can see in the orange, you can choose to opt out of that testing and follow the county and do a five-day quarantine at home. Test on day zero, test on day five and return, or you can test every day before school and you can stay in school. Which we were really, really grateful to have that dialogue with Dr. Kim and LACDPH to allow these students to be able to stay in school.
Are there, are there exceptions here for whether or not a kid is vaccinated or they've already had the virus?
Yep, so that's the green section. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I'm just currently referring to the orange section.
Yep, you're right.
No, no worries. Okay, any questions? Sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, so a question here. You have asymptomatic and unvaccinated exposure without a mask, what about exposure if you're wearing a mask? You don't have that.
That's the bottom, right. So would you like me to address green or red next?
Oh, I saw it. Okay, I didn't see the, okay.
No problem. Green next, okay. Sure.
So, okay, so about March 2020, or I should say when we started actually interacting with the public, there was a lot of screening. I mean, there were a lot of temperature gauges and the, um, the app.
I was looking for that.
Since we have now decided that the temperature is perhaps not relevant, um, can you tell me in this matrix where the screening, um, does and does not apply, such as temperature check? Um, you know, the, the kids doing the, the daily, um, check.
Both of them are still in the protocols of T1 from LACDPH. However, they're not on this graphic, because this is just a close contact exposure protocol. Right? So they're not a regular attendance protocol. If it was a regular attendance protocol, I would have to show you um, T1 and T2, which is a, a lot more pages.
Okay, no problem, got it.
I can go through that, but.
But in other words, those things are still intact and still at play.
Correct.
The general population when they arrive.
Correct.
On the campus.
Yes.
And that's for staff, and that's for visitors, and that is for, um, the student.
Yes. But I don't disagree, you know, fever as a symptom has changed when the variants changed. Um, however, in terms of what the county says, that's correct.
Could I ask a quick question, please?
Yes.
Um, how are, uh, exposure, the, with, uh, without mask and with mask identified? Is that with consultation with the positive student?
Great question.
How accurate can we really get with that?
Absolutely. So it's about it being in a school setting and supervised by a school staff member. So that's literally the definition from LACDPH.
So, so the exposure has to be at school?
Correct.
Because I, I, I mean, and this is purely like, you know, anecdotal, secondhand information, but I've heard like investigations kind of being done by the administration as to a party that happened over the weekend. Were you there when this kid was there that proved to be, that's us, it, I'm not saying it happened. If it did happen, we're agreeing that that would be a step beyond what the L.A. County.
So the investigation.
Requires.
So the investigation part that you're referring to is two-part, and I can answer it in two parts. One part is interviewing the, the student or staff member who has COVID and finding out who were your close contacts, right? So to do that, they interview anyone. So they interview the person who has COVID, and they ask them, who were you within six feet of for more than 15 minutes? Over 24 hours in the last two days before you tested positive for COVID or exhibited symptoms, whichever came first. Right? And as you can imagine, that gets pretty tricky when we decrease in age. In terms of their ability to identify that, right? So it's not a perfect science. We're just doing the best we can. The second layer to that, in terms of that interview, would then be talking to the staff who witnessed that interaction. Now, if we're at a weekend and we're at a party, in terms of asking them, who were you within six feet of for more than 15 minutes? And we have a 10th grader who's at the high school, they're pretty clear about who, that, who they know that falls into that category. Um, in terms of then asking, were you wearing a mask or were you not wearing a mask? That's completely irrelevant. That goes beyond anything that would change any decision that we could make under LACDPH.
I guess my question is, what the LACDPH guidelines are telling us is what to do when there is close contact exposure at school, right? We're not, the, the, the LACDPH guidelines don't cover what happens outside of school. That's my question.
So the minute that falls outside of school, and so it can't be reliably accounted for that the students had the masks on 100% consistently at the time of exposure. They would fall into either your green or orange areas.
Right.
Right? Vaccinated, unvaccinated, both asymptomatic.
I, I think your question is um, about, you know, the authority of, of the school. Um, and, and so it is the responsibility of the person who is positive to share that information, uh, whether it's a sibling or they were at a birthday party. Um, and, and that is whether you're in school or not. They still have a responsibility as the um, student that has tested positive to share that information.
Maybe we should actually let her go through the.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. Sure.
Can I, can I clarify one thing? Is, um, so if you are not able to determine whether the exposure happened masked or unmasked, they are assumed unmasked?
If we are not able to determine what, give me an example of the situation where we wouldn't be able to.
If they were outside of school and no staff member was able to give a clear account of them witnessing the transmission, then they are, are assumed that it was unmasked.
We're not even able to make assumptions. We have to follow the county rules, which is that they would be not considered in a school setting supervised by school staff.
If, say, even if you were on campus and there was a supervisor and they were not able to accurately remember if they were masked or unmasked, or they assumed masked or unmasked?
We would err on the side of caution.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, we're yet to face a situation where at least the teacher who was witnessing in, in the situation that you have explained where the teacher was there, because you're saying that they were supervised, the teacher, both the teacher and the person having COVID would have to both not remember. So that, I haven't.
And would the same thing be if it were outdoors and there were no staff witnessing it?
No, if there are outdoors and there are no staff witnessing it, then it was not taking place in, in a supervised school setting supervised by school staff because they were not supervised by school staff.
Even if it's on a school campus?
Correct.
Okay.
Because if they were not supervised by school staff, we have a responsibility in the health order to attest that we saw the exposure take place.
So if you interview a student who was in class and outside of class, and they provide names of those that, they were in contact with outdoors outside of class but still on campus, are those students contacted for testing?
Those students would be considered close contacts, yes. And because of obviously privacy reasons, we cannot say to them, oh, the person that you were exposed to allegedly was Dr. Breggy, do you think that that makes sense? Because I can't tell them that Dr. Breggy has it. And that's why I'm saying and totally acknowledging, it's an imperfect science.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would recommend that we let you finish this and then hold our questions till we get through that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So green, uh, so we're done with orange. So green is asymptomatic and vaccinated. So this has a mask with a line through it, across through it, and a checkmark because it doesn't matter. LACDPH doesn't dis- distinguish between the two exposures. Um, they are very clear that if you are vaccinated and asymptomatic, or now they have reintroduced, as you'll see at the bottom of that box, had COVID within the last 90 days, that you are considered the same as someone who is vaccinated. However, BHUSD, which is very clearly worded there, that this is our, our opinion, our perspective, because we've seen it time and time and time again, that if you had it prior to December 15th, because of the rate of reinfection we're seeing from people who had Delta, who are now having Omicron, that you really consider getting tested. You don't have to, you're not required to, but we really, really, really recommend it because we are seeing again and again and again, people who had Delta, now having Omicron, bringing it to school, sharing it with their friends. And then we're seeing little clusters of cases happen like that. So this language was removed. As you know, at the last board meeting, the 90 days was actually taken out by the county altogether because of Omicron. They said, okay, well, this doesn't make sense, so they took it out, and then they put it back in, and we are also abiding by that. It's back in. We don't encourage it to not test at all when you've had an exposure like that because we are seeing fully vaccinated students who were exposed, who had Delta, then be infected with Omicron. Then we have the bottom right-hand corner, the red corner. This is called our essentially modified quarantine students. So the exposure took place where masks were on, it was supervised by school staff in a school setting. It was worn consistently and correctly during the entire time of exposure. And for those students, the great news, which I was a huge advocate of, and poor Dr. Ferrer received many emails from me, saying, why can't they participate in extracurricular activities and sports? They are the most protected kids at this point. You know, the, the vaccination, obviously, as Mr. Haleimi has pointed out, really helps us with hospitalizations and the severity of illness, but not so much with transmission. And so we have been advocating as BHUSD for a long time now in saying that we have seen no transmission from a masked student to another masked student in a classroom setting. And so could they please review this? So we were thrilled to see that they came aboard with that and removed that requirement. So that is the red section. We then have this days area, which is in blue. And essentially what this lays out for everyone is how tricky it can be to work out what your days are. So day zero is for the person who has COVID, the day their symptoms started, or the day they took a test, whichever came first. So they might have been attending Hamilton. We had one student who was attending Hamilton. They took a regular test because they were not able to be vaccinated. They weren't at the age yet, and it turned out that they had COVID, so they couldn't attend. So that was their day zero, right? The day they, they took their test. We have other students who are symptomatic, and they haven't necessarily tested, but they think, oh, actually I have a scratchy throat, so they test the next day. Their day zero was the day that their scratchy throat started. We contact trace two days before that, so we have negative two and negative one. Then everyone tests on the day of exposure, and the reason that this happens is because, just because the person who was actually having the case, their day zero, was that day that I just described, doesn't mean that, for example, Mrs. Marcus, who might be my close contact and I had contact on that exact same day. We might have had a class together two days ago and I might not have seen her since. So everyone's day zero is different depending on their time of exposure. Does that make sense? So from that, then, you do your test, which could be the day of, it could be a few days later. For asymptomatic students, obviously, it could be days and days later when actually it started. Uh, then you are going to test daily before school if you're falling into the orange category, which is why those circles are orange on days one, two, three, four. On five, everybody does that secondary test. And then on day six through 11, now, it's pretty much the same rules for everybody. Remain vigilant, wear your mask at all times, and return to regular rules on day 11.
Can I also just make a, a quick comment? Because this, this summarizes this information that has been changed over and over and over again for, for two years. Just backing up just for some history. Um, you know, before, when we were, when we were closed, uh, as a school district, uh, and through the county, the, we, we had to demonstrate, uh, following the L.A. County Department of Health protocols through the T1 and through the exposure management through T2, that this, we had to demonstrate that we have met the responsibilities and expectations for everything in the health order. So we're, we're using this now to summarize because we're so familiar with the language, and it's easier for our parents and our teachers and our community. Uh, but the, the health orders are still there, and it's just like it was from two years ago, that, just for some history, that we have to be able to demonstrate, uh, in order to reopen. And so when we were reopening, uh, we had to, uh, not only meet those expectations, but then we had to have an inspector came out and walked our schools and our principals. Uh, we're here, and, uh, as an administration, uh, we started with our elementary schools, and, uh, we had to demonstrate, we walked around, they had to look at the protocols, they gave us feedback. We had to adjust those feedbacks. So, so a lot has changed, and this has obviously evolved a, a great deal. But kind of as a reminder, where we were, uh, just over a year, year and a half, two years ago, that we had to demonstrate this to reopen, um, and, uh, and to stay open, these are the expectations that they have placed upon the administration, uh, to keep those expectations, uh, current.
Yeah, they're pretty good with follow-ups. I mean, I'll let any of you guys chime in, but anytime there's an anonymous complaint submitted to the Department of Health, we receive a phone call and sometimes a surprise visit uh, to make sure that we're complying, so.
Mr. Bugby just said in the very beginning twice.
It, it depends on the site, but there's been, uh, sometimes it's a phone call, other times they, we've actually had an inspector come out to, um, to our school sites to, uh, to, to check it out, and then to make sure that we've followed up with, with action as well.
Um, if I can make a, a comment, I, if, if I'm correct when I'm hearing you, it sounds to me, if you are exposed and you test negative, then you wear a mask inside and outside for five days, and you, on day five, test again. And if you're still negative, then you're in the clear, unless you're unvaccinated, in which case you test for five days straight, and you can stay in school, but you have to wear, wear a mask. for five days straight and you can stay in school, but you have to wear, wear a mask indoors and out. So the real difference is if you're unvaccinated and you're exposed, instead of testing only on day five, you test every day until day five, to make sure that your, your exposure doesn't turn into COVID. And if you have COVID, then it's, that's the scenarios that you went through. Right. I feel like the majority of the students are the ones that, you know, they, they're either vaccinated or unvaccinated and they, if they test negative, that, that protocol has actually started to get more simplified in terms of what the protocol is. And the only difference for the unvaccinated is that they test every day till the fifth day instead of only on day five. But everybody can go to school if they were exposed and tested negative and they just wear their mask inside and out.
Which is a privilege afforded to us because we push back.
Right. And I think that, that, you know, I hear a lot of questions where people say it's not the same for if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, but when I'm, I'm looking at this, the main, the main difference really is for those that, that are exposed and test negative, that's really the main difference.
And, and this is new with.
It's new and it was also, um, a result of you pushing back or advocating, um, to try and allow those students to be able to stay.
It's twofold for the reasons that we, we did it. One was, um, because we have such a robust testing program that really allows us the opportunity that most school districts don't have, um, which is that we have now testing available at every site from fourth, from seven thirty till four thirty every day. It's also because, um, for teachers who, uh, many of them, I, I cannot speak in any way for all of them. Many teachers advocated that they were concerned that students who were perhaps quarantining were not quarantining at home. And so they were going out into the community, perhaps they were going to Legoland, perhaps they were experiencing all different things, um, which is totally their prerogative, they're not in our supervision. And so if they're in the classroom, they're able to actually have more instruction because they weren't then tuning into Zooms. Um, it might not have been a good fit for them, uh, instructionally. Uh, so to be able to keep them in the classroom and for our teachers to be able to actually teach them in person was a huge benefit to keeping, uh, the educational continuity and also everybody a bit more safe.
Um, I, I think it's very challenging. I mean, this is a lot of information. It's, it's a huge strain, obviously, when you're trying to contact trace. Um, I'm hearing that there is a lot of, just from even our questions here, a lot of confusion or, you know, people are uncomfortable with the, the contact tracing. It's, it's hard to do. It, it's, you know, it, at different developmental ages, it's hard to do how the kids get questioned and what that, um, what the feedback is from them or the parents and how they feel about the contact tracing. Um, I think that's an area where, as an immediate thing, I feel like we can improve upon, even if we, at this point, have to follow county guidelines, I feel like we can, uh, talk about how to do that at each of those different stages. Are there ways we can improve upon that and, uh, so that people can kind of come together on how that experience goes and be mindful of that. But I'm going to turn this over to everybody else and give them a chance to.
May I?
Their comments.
The only last thing I would say is, um, how encouraged I was when we saw our data from last week to see, uh, actually, we ended up having a seventy percent reduction at all school sites in cases between week one and week two. And we just have had our results in from, um, the first day of testing this week. And it looks like we're heading in a very, very similar direction with a decrease in cases. So that is easing the burden of contact tracing because less students are being traced, um, and impacted by COVID.
Right. I think it's been a, a time of high anxiety, but I think that even in the beginning with the contact tracing and the other, um, you know, the other protocols and, and enforcing that, and it's changed and it's, you know, it's a lot of information to have to execute. So, um, I, I think that it's all been a lot. But I really do just want to say again how much I appreciate the work that you're doing and to, um, and to all the staff to keep updating this information and, you know, executing it in a way that we can keep the schools open. Um, but I do want us to have the time to be able to address how we can improve. Amanda, would you like to speak?
Oh, yeah, we can go around.
Um, however you want. You can start, Amanda.
Okay. Um, first of all, thank you, um, Starkins, wonderful. I don't know how your working memory holds on to all these pieces of information and for you to then extrapolate and. Right. Um, I think one of the biggest, um, vexing issues for me is the process of contact tracing. The rationale, some of the redundancy behind it, um, I understand the need for it, but at the same time, um, I really feel like it is one of the things that has turned our schools into things in which it doesn't look like a school anymore. And I think the staff who have to put tremendous amount of, um, working hours into this can attest to that, that with your wonderful talents as a communication and advertising person, I don't think you knew that you would be in fact turning into an epidemiologist. Um, so I feel like the, and some, uh, one of the people who called and used the word surveillance, I feel like we need to really look at how we're doing contact tracing and minimize it to the extent possible because I find it to be a tremendous disruption. And as a psychologist too, I can tell you that it is, I think, particularly damaging for some of the teens and pre-teens, because at this age, as we know, they are very self-conscious. And for one to be called out and told that they are in fact associated with this group and these kids, and then this person is not associated with this peer group is very damaging and humiliating, I can tell you. Um, and it's, it's, um, an invasion of privacy also because, you know, adolescents want to work on their networks and their private networks and to sort of put it into a big magnifying glass with all these strangers and these grownups who are looking into how you did and did not socialize is a tremendous impact on them socially and emotionally. And that is just one aspect of one of the reasons why we need to, um, greatly look at making the contact tracing efficient, um, or scrapped altogether if possible and safe. Thank you. That's all I have at this moment.
Mrs. Marcus?
Let me see if Eli has anything, if he wanted to add first and I'll go. Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I, I would like to make several comments and I am about this end of the table. Uh, first of all, I'd like to talk to the parents that spoke today so beautifully and gave us so much of their comments and shed so many thoughts and, and, and what the kids are going through and, and, and uh, and in fact, I didn't realize in some of the things that they have been going through, the kids, because I'm not in the classroom and I don't see it. So I really appreciated their comments and their thoughts and, and thanked them for being here to, to present them. I, I, I want to make something very, very clear right now. We are hearing from the people who are opposed to our very strong and don't appreciate what we might be doing. And we are not hearing from the people who are very grateful for what we are doing and don't want to see us change. And I think we need to keep that in mind, that there's a group of people out there that do like what we're doing and, and keeping our students safe. Although I, I want to tell Mr. Haleemi, uh, Haleemi, his passionate, uh, approach to this whole subject. I really appreciated, all the information was there and, and so on, but there's a group of people out there that don't feel the way maybe you do, and we're not hearing from them because those are the ones that tend to remain silent. And I went, because the ones that don't like it, they're the ones that come out. So I'd like to point that out. My next question, of course, is, um, I feel very strongly that it is our students who are the recipients of this horrible situation, the social, emotional development, the physical development, everything that's going on that is affecting them. And I think that that in itself puts a heavy burden on us as a school district to provide them with the support and the programs to help alleviate what they're going through. And I think that's something that we do need to address very seriously. Couple of other notes that I had. Uh, of course, the thought that, uh, the health of the older people is, you know, as opposed to the children is a, is a very serious thought for me. And I, I, I agree that sometimes, uh, that what they're doing is for the adults like myself and we're not concerned. I, as a person, am very protective of my health, but I also feel that I'm also very protective of the children and I've always been and will always continue to do so. The children are paying the price for what's going on in, in the world right now, and there's no doubt about that either. So my question is, I would like to see where we could probably revisit some of the protocols and some of the things that are only suggested, rather than take it, looking at the mandates and, because there's not much we can do with mandates, but we can look at things that, like outdoor masking. I agree with you on that one. That, that to me is nonsensical. I mean, so there are things, um, I don't know as much about the testing, uh, but the program of the testing and so on, but I, I think it seems to be working. We're keeping our schools open for the most part. And what I did see today, and that was thanks to the report that you gave us, Dr. Breggy, the number of cases today that were reported in comparison to the last four or five days, we are dropping. And that makes me wonder if we are beginning to turn the clock, to turn it around, and I hope we are. Uh, I've seen that. So I really appreciate the, the comments and the presentation by Mr. Haleemi. I agree with a lot of what he said, a lot of the information, it's very apparent. And I, I think we need to look at the, some of the things that we're doing, but not at the expense of protecting the students continuously or to continue to, to keep the students up, uh, safe. So I think that that's about, um, well, I think I'll wait and hear what some of my colleagues have to say.
Okay. Um, Gabe, thank you for preparing all this today and bringing it. I do appreciate it. So it's a lot to, to take in and digest. But what I really appreciate is your second to last page, which is, what can we do about it now? And understanding that you, like you said, Rochelle said that there's, there's mandates and we can say, okay, there's mandates and there's suggestions. What can we as a board legally attack? You know, as far as our policies and revisit without, without even having to do a risk analysis, without even have, just, just to make it. And I wrote this down here. How can we keep students, continue to keep students safe while freeing up our administrators to get back to focus on learning? That's what I wrote down. That's what I want to see happen, right? So I don't know. And I have a question and, and, and our administrators who are here, anybody can jump up and answer if you'd like, or just hold it, hold it up on your hands, but what percent of your job now is COVID? Seriously, what percent of your job is COVID? Are you spending an enormous amount of time?
It depends on which administrator at which site.
Uh, I understand. So just the, those administrators that are the, the point people here, there's two of you here.
Mr. Margot, at the high school, for me, it's about ninety percent of my job.
Okay. Normally, if there was no COVID, what would ninety percent of your job be?
Trying to build positive relationships with students, um, working with teachers, uh, you know, obviously teacher, all the normal teacher evaluation. He's working with A S B.
Okay. That, that right there stops me in my tracks and says, okay. So what can we do as a board to help you guys get back to Drew, what he wants to do? What he signed up to do originally, without putting students at risk, right? That's the question that we have to come to a conclusion tonight and answer. And Rochelle, your point about people in the community that are not speaking up really hits home to me because I hear, not as a board member, but I hear phone calls and stuff and the thank yous and all of that stuff, thank you for keeping our kids safe. But we're, I know, uh, you know, two years into it, we're all extremely wary. We are all past that point. So for the speakers that, that, that addressed us tonight, I do hear you. I really hear your frustration. So I would like to gear the conversation for the remainder of the evening on addressing, what can we do to make your lives easier? So you can get back to doing what we hired you to do in the first place, um, because we didn't hire you as he, as health official.
Stop COVID.
Um, yeah, well, did, well, immune, immune, herd immunity, right? Um, there's a couple of factors that we all have to consider up here as we discussed juggling things around and changing them. One is our current agreement with the union. So we have to make sure that decisions we make are in line with agreements with the union. Those, if they're not, they're going to have, we have to consider that those have to be renegotiated. Um, also, a lot has been said around, Wade, I'll throw this one at you, give the money back. Stop following protocols and give the money back. Can somebody address the correlation between COVID funds that we're receiving and protocols that we're following? And is there a correlation? Because we've heard, we've heard over the, over the months, we've heard. We've, we've, we've heard people say, we've heard people say, give the money back and stop following the protocols.
You know, one thing, if I could just say right before, uh, Wade, uh, speaks about that is, you know, the, the reason, one of the reasons why we are where we are today is because of the testing program that we put into place, which is a lot of our, the COVID money, um, that, that we're getting, along with some of the P P E signage, all of the, the things that we've been accumulating, um, you know, during this time, temperature machines, all of those things. Um, you know, just as a reminder too, and it's been painful and I understand it, is just, you know, a reminder too that our, our, our neighboring school district was closed last week. That's, you know, right next door. Um, and it's because they couldn't get in front of the exposure. Um, and so the testing program has been, um, a real benefit for us. Um, being able to identify those, uh, the contact tracing is, is again, as difficult as that is for many people. Uh, we've been able to identify and, and, and slow that transmission as much as possible. You know, those are expectations that are in our health order to do that. We've exceeded some of those so that we could bring ourselves down. How quickly our cases are going down now is because we have that here on site. Uh, some of our cabinet members live in different areas and, uh, they don't have anything even close on their school sites. They have to go someplace else, uh, to receive that service.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. The focus of the funds from the federal and the state governments really are, is two-pronged. Uh, uh, the safety, uh, of our students and staff was the focus of, of much of the funds and also learning loss mitigation, uh, now and into the future. So those funds are meant to last us for the next couple of years. Um, we only received the one small grant from the CDC of about five hundred thousand dollars that was focused on testing. And those funds have been spent pretty much as of today.
Okay. And does that also, uh, apply to the testing for the contract tracing, that, that, that testing as well?
Correct.
Okay. Because the contact tracing is required by the county.
It is.
Can I just ask that question to follow up? If we continue the testing program, are we dipping into our general fund now? And for the testing, as you say, if we've used up the funds already?
No, ma'am. We can use the other Esser and Gear funds for testing, uh, uh, both contact tracing and other kinds of testing for COVID. So no general funds are being used for this.
Okay. My, my last question for now, um, is also for the administrators, is this outdoor masking, um, question. Because we're not on the yards and we're not in the P E classes and stuff and we're not policing this. Is, is the outdoor masking something that is, um, hindering our success outside? Is it causing friction? Is it, are we really making sure that we're following our own policy about keeping people at a safe distance and then they don't have to be masked? Because, you know, we all know, you, you walk in a restaurant, mask goes off. You're inside, you still have the mask off. People are outside, they're eating, they're drinking, masks are off, people are standing next to each other, eating and drinking with masks off. I can't imagine that we can be everywhere at once and be policing all of this. So a policy is not effective if it can't be enforced. So to the outdoor masking, and I think we're all on the same page as this, is, is that something from the, the language between the county and ourselves, is this something that we can revisit and take some of the burden off? Because we're hearing that people are fighting about it, people, you know, the, um, staff is yelling at students and it, it's, I don't know if that's worth it. Because we, we are not truly, the minute we do that, somebody goes, well, they, they don't have their masks on right there. Nobody's saying anything to them, right? That's typical. So is that something that we can address as well?
So I would, I would ask, just, um, not to put you on the spot, but our elementary principals to come up because I think that we've got, we had a lot of discussion about this and this is, you know, relatively new with the break, with this change in the health order, is, you know, conversations of, you know, the expectation is that, um, you know, that students be, uh, physically distanced, you know, when, when it's, when it's feasible. And so is that feasible, uh, in the mornings when kids, you know, we can't keep kids away from each other? And with recess when they're playing. So, uh, but I'll let you guys speak, uh, just firsthand to that.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. Um, to address the question about like, what does it look like outside? Oh, so sorry. I'm Sarah Kever. I'm the principal at Hawthorne.
Craig Bugbee, principal at Horace Manor.
Rebecca, how could you not know that?
Sorry, everyone. What, what part do you want me to address first? Or do you want us? us to?
The mask. I wanna, I wanna, the, the effectiveness of this ethereal mask policy and, and are we really keeping kids in masks all the time outside?
I mean, for the most part, we're keeping kids in masks outside all the time. And when they forget to do it, we point to our faces and they quickly know to put them back on. Um, we had some issues like the first week that we came back, the first few days about like how we were communicating that message to our students, um, sometimes forgetting that like our students know, but it's hard to do. Now it's much more about, um, you got a mask to play, right? And, um, if you need to take a mask break, then go. Then we're sort of like in it with them, right? We're saying, um, if you need to take a break from your mask, go take a step away from everybody. Don't try to play through the not being able to breathe or it slips down. It's not a defiance issue for the most part. Um, it's really just, uh, they want to be able to get a bit more air. They want to be able to play that basketball game and it slips down below and we're just telling them, um, in our supervision.
Yeah. We, we've all said a hundred times, the easiest part of our jobs is working with the kids. We haven't had any compliance issues at Horace Mann in terms of kids wearing masks on the playground. I've had two questions since the new policy came into effect. We dealt with those questions and everything's fine. So on the playgrounds, outside at Horace Mann, we are not seeing issues.
Okay. And then what about?
With children.
Got it. What about high school and middle school? Same, same issue? So I mean, same results, different dynamic?
For middle school, it's very similar. Our, our kids, just viewpoint, we remind them, um, we don't have, we're, the elementary school, I think, has CD charts for lunch for the kids. We cannot do that in the middle school. So it's, you know, they sit with their friends and eat whatever they want. So they have their mask off while they're eating and drinking. But when they walk away, for the most part, our kids put their mask up and, um, it's the same thing. It's a thing. Don't remember to pull back up, but we just hope to remind them. There's no arguments with the kids. Um, a lot of our kids right now, um, it's like they're, they're aware of the surge and are choosing to keep their masks on more often. And I'm hearing more kids like, I don't even, I don't want to eat. And so they keep their mask on. No, honey, you have to eat. It's okay. Like there's some space where you can eat. Um, so they're, they're super aware and it's, they're very, very, um, frightened.
Thank you.
So we can talk about lunch for a second if you want to go back to elementary. It's a little different on the two campuses.
I just, I wanted to get a beat on the high school too, if there's any.
I'm, I'm gonna ask that you come up or Mr. Mead is.
Hey, this is Mark Mead. I'm on the Zoom. I've been here the whole time. How you guys doing?
Oh, hey.
All right, good. So the high school's tricky. You know, we don't have, uh, lunch aids. We have, you know, three security guards and, you know, we're pretty busy with COVID with three of our APs all the time. Long story short, we don't have a lot of supervision in the outdoors. There's literally no one there to, like a giant campus, over a thousand kids, to make kids wear masks outdoors. It's, I mean, it's borderline impossible. I, I don't even know if there are staff members who are very ambitiously trying. We're making the statements, we're talking about it, but like classroom is a place where they're supervised and we can really make those strong efforts. Outdoors, it's, it's close to impossible.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm turning over this.
Eli speak next, and then I'll speak after him.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, thank you to Mr. Halimi for putting together, uh, his presentation and bringing up the idea of this study session. Uh, thank you to Ms. Starkins and Dr. Breggy for the update on our protocols, just to give us a refresher. Uh, in terms of outdoor masking, uh, I'd like to agree with my colleagues that I don't believe it is the most necessary thing. Um, even while we were sitting here, I pulled up an article from NPR that says essentially the same thing we've seen from other sources is that outdoors is the safest place you can be. It even gives a statistic that transmission indoors is 19 times more likely than transmission outdoors. Um, and one of the biggest reasons for that is the more randomized airflow that occurs outdoors. And I'd say that that is especially, um, please correct me if I'm wrong, elementary principals, but I feel like random airflow are much more common when students are actually running around at recess, which helps to, uh, uh, mitigate the risk even more so. So I'd say at the elementary level, it's, it's even less of a risk outdoors, given that they are moving around much more than, uh, students at the high school specifically, cause usually lunch is generally pretty, uh, sedentary. But even so, being outdoors is a, uh, much greater deterrent of COVID than masks are overall, but especially just being outdoors. I don't believe that masks are the most necessary. Indoors, of course, I do believe that they are still necessary. Um, while the CDC has, uh, or not, I don't know if the CDC has said it, but I do know that multiple sources have stated that, um, the cloth masks and the surgical masks are not as effective as say the KN95s or the N95s, but those are much, uh, more difficult to come by these days. Uh, so I'd say that any kind of face covering should still be accepted, but, uh, LAUSD recently made a requirement that students have, uh, surgical masks, non-cloth masks that have a wire over the nose to ensure, uh, a more proper seal. So if we are able to provide masks like we did for all of our teachers and our staff to our students, I think that that may be beneficial in terms of keeping people, uh, from getting infected indoors. Um, two, this is, uh, something I was thinking about, but also piggybacks off of Mr. Margot's question about how much of our administrators' time is taken up with COVID. Uh, I'd say, uh, Dr. Breggy, Ms. Starkins, our COVID admins, you've been doing a fantastic job keeping everybody safe, ensuring that all the, uh, testing that needs to happen, happens, ensuring that everyone is updated with regards to the proper protocols. But this, quite frankly, is not the initial job that they signed up for, nor is it usually the job that they were trained to do in terms of the, the medical expertise. So LAUSD has a medical director as well as a specified COVID task force with its own staff and executive director. And while our district is much smaller than LAUSD and we may not have the capacity to have it, our own COVID task force, I do believe that possibly hiring someone to handle the, um, COVID overall, or possibly hiring a medical consultant to work with the district to provide reports to the board, to, um, assist our district and school site admin would be beneficial to our overall COVID response, whether that be purely administrative and they take the place of registering our positive cases with the county, as well as ensuring that our principals have the proper rosters to pull kids for testing. So we're not taking up time of our administrators or, uh, our, uh, our administrators to find the, the close contacts, but instead we're just using their time to get students to test, uh, and then having someone at the district level to coordinate, uh, that effort district-wide. So I was wondering, it has that been a discussion before within the district administration? And if not, um, I just was kinda curious what the, the thought on that was. So there, there was discussion about that. Um, and, and we have the luxury of being able to work with all the other school districts, specifically, um, the 78 other school districts in LA County. Um, there are 80, but Pasadena and Long Beach have their own, um, health department. Um, and you know, there, there's really, there's, there's nobody that knows our schools, um, and, and our facilities, um, better than, you know, our, our own staff, which is, which is why, you know, that's, that's always been an option. I don't know, um, a school district that, um, has, you know, the, the people that you're hands-on people that are, um, on the ground and in classrooms and working with the testing program. Um, in every district is your administrative staff, um, pretty much everywhere. And I have colleagues all over the country that are still doing that. Um, it's not something, you know, that we chose to do, but it, there isn't, uh, you know, anybody else that knows the kids better, that knows the facilities better. When things change so quickly overnight that we have the ability to meet and to communicate with one another, um, we have the, we have access to medical experts. So we, we have the opportunity to be able to, to speak freely when there is, uh, something that's medically related. Um, but these are all things that, um, you know, we have been trained as a compliance team and as compliance officers. So, you know, it kind of falls squarely, you know, at, at our feet. Can I, uh, for, this is for the, eh, school administrators and the, and the, those directly involved with the COVID, uh, handling is, um, what, this is further pinpointing of, uh, question Mr. Margot asked earlier. What percentage of your COVID handling is filing paperwork with the county or filling out forms or ensuring the proper documentation is filed?
Doctor's gone.
Almost none of it. Um, cause we do have the support from the district office for that. Um, 90% of my COVID time is interacting with my students and their parents. Um, and that's what I'm pulled to do. And I have actually, um, Dr. Breggy has given us permission to get the help that we need. And so I have gotten some extra help and they're helping with the data entry, pulling kids, bringing them to my office. And so most of the time is dealing with the community needs that we are in charge of.
Thank you. Um, yeah, that's about all I have, I believe.
Thank you, Eli. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm listening to what everybody's saying. I really appreciate your presentation, Gabe. I really appreciate hearing, uh, from the, the parents and the community that spoke out about their concerns. Some of the concerns, um, I feel like are recent, but I also feel like it's, it is, uh, we've heard these concerns really also from the beginning of COVID and different, um, and different variations. And I think the theme that I hear is about, um, you know, people feeling that there's a fear or the social emotional aspect of how this information comes to them or how their kids are experiencing that at school. And is there a way that we can do that better? Um, I would say that as an overriding theme for all of us. Uh, and I know that it's, you know, that, um, people get, that it gets tense and things are heightened and you're trying to follow protocol and the kids are, are feeling that and they're policing each other. And, uh, there's this fear that then takes over, especially when we have these heightened numbers and the numbers of people that are contacted or contact for contact tracing are, are skyrocketing. I think that the intensity just goes, gets skyrocketed. And I'm really happy that the numbers are going down and I feel like things are starting to, you know, settle down a little bit, but we may have another one of those. And I think that's something that's really mind, that we all need to be mindful of is that, um, you know, in executing this and also for our parents to also remember is that to try and remember how we're speaking to the children, how the children, how we're encouraging them to also take care of each other, not policing each other, but taking care of each other. Because I'm hearing that, that theme, um, repeated. And I think that's probably something more at the site level where you guys, when you're talking amongst yourselves and also when you're communicating with the parents and with the site councils, that they all, um, are reminded of that and talk to each other about that in that way to, to keep the children, uh, and their wellbeing at, at the focus and remember to kind of slow down and, and how are we communicating that? In terms of the policies, I, I really, um, agree. I feel like we can, that there is some room with the masking outside and I would really like us to, to look into that. I think I've heard that from each and every one of us, that there's a possibility to try and, um, to relax a little bit on the mask outdoors to the extent that we are able to within the guidelines. And, and the other thing, um, so I'd like to hear from, from you all, if that's something that, that we can do or how we would go about looking into it. I also would like us to discuss just how can we make contact tracing better? And when I say that, can we ease it up at all for you and also for the, for the kids? Is there a way that we can, uh, not feel like it's a police state of contact tracing? I know in the beginning, it was really so important and I'm, and it is important now, but is there any wiggle room in how we do contact tracing in a way that maybe is, uh, not so, uh, feeling like it's a police state in terms of how the kids are communicating that?
May I?
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to ask a specific question. And I, I want to reiterate that I, of course, want everyone to stay safe, but since this is, you know, the, the tide is changing and we're, we're thinking, wow, we really want to look like a school again. We want to be able to return, uh, back to some of the great gems we have. Is it possible at all? And this is just open for conversation. Is it possible or feasible for there to be voluntary testing for those who are vaccinated, have no symptoms and were exposed? So again, I'm just asking, what would be the ramifications of voluntary testing for those who have no symptoms, who are vaccinated and were exposed? Sorry, Rebecca.
Okay. So there are three areas that I'm hearing. Um, do you mind if I answer that right after I answer Mrs. Wells' question? Um, in terms of when you said the police state of contact tracing, we are so on board with that. Like every single person would be like, yes.
I mean, I agree. I'm hearing it from both parents. I'm hearing it from parents and I'm hearing it.
Yes, we are so on board with that. And that is why we are so grateful that the county, like just this, this literally happened a few days that we're at this place where we can literally, under this guidance, even for the people who have had COVID in 90 days, they've been in school that long. So we have that in our database. So we didn't even have to ask them, have you had COVID in 90 days? We ask people who haven't, or we don't have a record of it, have you, can you provide that to us? But if they haven't, if we have that in our database that they've had it, especially since December 15th, that's not even a conversation that's taking place. Do you know what I mean? So that's immediately able to be taken off. This is so, so, super recent, but immediately something that we're able to take off. They don't even have to be feeling like they're being contact traced because they're not. We're doing that internally, right? We're checking in, has this student had COVID specifically post Omicron? And then we have a conversation with the parent. But in terms of that moving to the, the student interaction, that's not something that has been available to us before this new health order. So we're really pleased to see that. And you'll see that as parents rolling out in the schools more and more over the coming weeks, right? Cause this is something that's new. So we've got that data. It's getting inputted of who has had COVID within 90 days. It's becoming a column in our database that we turned it black for a short period of time and it's coming back. Um, so I just wanted to address that. Um, Dr. Stern, I think that you're, um, I think that was really well put in terms of what can we do around testing? So there's not much we can do in terms of mandatory LACDPH testing. And where we have wiggle room, we wiggle. Where we currently have a testing policy, which I'm sure I will get a lot of hate mail for even acknowledging this, is that there is a board policy that has surveillance testing for the entire district once a week. That's not required by LACDPH. It's highly recommended. We don't really include high, high, high recommendations as, as required unless we bring them to the board and say, what do you want to do with this? I mean, Dr. Breggy makes that decision and then he, in every experience I've had with him through this pandemic, has brought it to a board level. If there's a question mark over something, what do we want to do? And that was something that came to the board. So we pulled some data, um, to see how that would impact us. And through Dr. Now testing, which is a, it's a PCR weekly testing program, which all unvaccinated students participate in once a week, all staff participate in once a week if they are fully vaccinated, twice a week if they are not fully vaccinated. And randomly selected, selected vaccinated students also participate in once a week, uh, which that number has increased and decreased the percentage depending on obviously the rates in our district. Last week, which was week two of 2022 for us for the school year, we caught 38 cases through Dr. Now and 63 through COVID MD, which is our rapid antigen testing program. Right? I'm not going to profess to be a doctor or to know anything about medical and science, but the Dr. Now testing really, if we break it down and I look at what people are giving us in terms of the information, we ask them, are you symptomatic? Were you symptomatic? Now, there are a handful of people who say, no, 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 I, I'm not symptomatic. I just, I just have a cold and a slight fever. It's not a symptom. There is that handful of people, right? That does happen. And we're like, oh, when did that start? And they say, about five days ago, actually. I mean, and, and we're like, oh, okay. So, right. It's, it's hard to sometimes remember and you might think it's allergies or whatever. So there's a handful of that. I'm gonna acknowledge that. But really, the Dr. Now testing is catching asymptomatic cases, which from what I've been told is often less risky to spreading to other people because it's a less intense experience. I, I mean, I, like I said, I'm not a doctor. I'm not pretending to be. I'm telling you the information from the data that we have, that we've collected, that if someone's asymptomatic, I'm not sure the value, right, in necessarily catching that case. I'm not going to profess to know. And I'm not saying we take it out or, or put it back into play. I'm just telling you the information we have. So almost double the number of students, they actually felt a symptom or went and got a dragonfly test because they were caught as a close contact. So they were encouraged and, and required to test because they were close contact through dragonfly slash COVID MD. Um, and sixty-three of those cases were caught that way. Thirty-eight cases were caught through the PCR surveillance program. That number, just in terms of today, Kelly, I think we're at three dragonfly doc, dragonfly COVID MD cases. And, and, yeah. Two, two dragonfly and three Doctor Now. So it's early in the week, we're at day one, right? Some of BVMS students were tested this morning, so those results aren't in yet. But the numbers are, are decreasing to such a level that I guess the question that Dr. Stern, I think, might have been perhaps, um, throwing on the table is what does testing look like for us? There's not much I can do with the health order. Um, in terms of what you guys want to do for the board policy, that's up to you. In terms of masks and distancing and, and pretending that it's feasible to distance kids outside, we know exactly what that looks like. We did it. They did it. They did an amazing job at it. It was a disaster and a nightmare and awful, but they did it. I mean, Ms. Cavan might want to speak more to it. We had darts for kids of where they could sit. We had towels that they all had and that they could eat on so that they would be six feet apart. And they didn't have to wear their mask for those, we, we, we've experienced this. So I'm not on the ground in the schools to speak to that, but I'm sure that they would be willing to speak to that more if that's of interest. So those are sort of the three things that I heard.
But now they don't separate them when they eat, right?
No, now they can play, they can.
Well, because they're masked now, so.
No, 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 when they're, when they're eating.
Oh, no, when they're eating.
They're eating outside, they're sitting together.
Horace Mann actually has the, um, ability to separate their students by six feet for their eating because they have a lot more table and outdoor space, um, that they can configure that way. So those students never fall within the six feet range to be at, as a close contact at lunchtime. Hawthorne doesn't have that luxury in the same way. They could implement something like that. I'm sure we could look at opportunities for that. But it's not required in the health order that they be six feet apart while they're eating.
Right. And therein lies the hypocrisy of the order. Okay, and that's the frustrating thing for me to be caught in this. Yes, is it going to be healthier to have your mask on during this whole thing? Sure it is. But if you're going to let people sit near each other, and I'm sure they do at BV and the high school, they're sitting right next to each other with their masks off, eating, and you can't do anything about it because it's not policy from county, the whole outdoor mask rule is hypocritical. So I would love to be able, if we're going to push back on anything, to use your vernacular, Gabe, that's one I would like to push back on. I don't want to openly defy the county, but I want to say, look at our numbers, look at our data. If our cases continue to drop, can we eliminate the outdoor masking? If we're, if you were able to successfully get them to bend on other things because of our, our, our situation, then it stands to reason that for something like this, if you clearly pointed out to them that kids are going to sit next to each other with their masks off and eat, so what does it matter if they're playing basketball with their masks off? What does it ma- you know, so can we, can we address that at least?
It's the length of exposure is how they've addressed it with us when we've put, when we've asked the questions.
Right, but, but I would say, based, based on case rates, and I think it's really important.
Right.
I think the testing is important because if it continues to show what you're telling us today, then testing, also the surveillance testing, could be rolled back. Because we, 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 I don't want to say we should eliminate it because we don't know if there's going to be another variant. We don't know what's going to happen with this thing, right? This Omicron could be the end, could be the beginning of the end, may not be, we don't know. Um, like you said, I'm not a doctor. But, um, I think it's something else to look at and say, look, let's look at the numbers, the la- the, the first three, four weeks in January, and we'll make a decision as a board. Do we pull back? Do we do it every other week? Do we do it once a month? Do we wait until we watch, watch the, the, um, the contact tracing numbers and see if those start going up? And then we can reenact the surveillance testing to be preventative. I think we have flexibility in that. And saying that we're going to roll back on the testing doesn't mean we're abandoning it. It just means we're managing it, which is what we've been doing with this pandemic from the beginning. So I think those two things, um, are, are, should be discussed. And sh- and definitely, we should, we should be able to have a room in the county to say, you know, look, you, you can't enforce that outdoor mask policy if you're letting people sit together and eat outside. You really can't do that because you're talking about exposure, right? Length of exposure, right? That was the term you used. Kids can sit together for twenty minutes.
If they're actively eating. That's, I'm just telling you the language in the, I don't disagree with you.
I know, I know, but, but that's, that's, that's just getting, uh, for lack of a better term, ridiculous. That's what I would say.
I, I, I would agree with you on the, on, uh, asking about the outdoor masking and seeing how we can, uh, whatever room we can, we can move on that. Because I, I agree. I think that's really challenging.
We definitely asked about the masking and we were told unequivocally that if you think it's feasible to distance them by six feet, you cannot have masks.
Well, maybe we tried, um, I mean, I just think, let, let's look at how we can feasibly do that in a way that's not.
We've done it. Can you guys, can you guys share?
Without the dots on the floor, maybe the kids can, I, I'm just suggesting maybe there's somewhere in between.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not in the school site.
Yeah, I hear you saying, I think the other thing, I, I absolutely think that when we talked about doing our testing last, this is before Omicron and, and we're in a different place. And I definitely think that that right now is a great, uh, area for us to, to reevaluate and see based on where these numbers are going. Do we want to look at changing how we're doing that? And, and like Noah said, we've been basing that off of what our tests and what our data looks like. So as this is changing, I think it's absolutely the right time to, to consider that and, uh, see if we want to change how we're testing, how much we're testing. And, and again, as the numbers go, if the numbers go back up, then, then that's, so will our decisions on how much testing.
So what we could do is maybe on the February eighth board meeting, we can bring the data up until that point, um, evaluate the data and see how the board wants to move forward with it.
We, we can do that. And, and the, the implementation of the policy even to begin with was, you know, we were, were required to have a, a testing program. And we're still going to have one.
Right.
It's just managing that and what it looks like.
Right.
You know, based on our own data. And if people go back to that meeting, we said that many times, that we, that we wanted that opportunity to base our testing program based on our data.
Because you wonder if sci- I'm sorry, you wonder if science has asked the question with Omicron, at least in a school setting, how many kids are vaccinated? How many kids got it? How many kids were, were unvaccinated and got? Eventually it's going to run its course, you know? That's what's going to happen. Um, so many kids have gotten this one way or another that it's going to run its course. It's, at least for the Omicron, um, we, we'll be out of it. And it looks like we're getting out of it from, from the data.
Twenty, sorry, one other data point. Twenty percent of students have had COVID since December fifteenth in our district. We ran those numbers today.
In our, in our school, are you talking about in our?
In BHUSD.
What percent of kids have had it and/or are vaccinated total? Do you have any idea?
I would need to bring that back to you. Yeah.
You, you do have those records though. You do have those.
Yes.
Some of them.
Based on what people have provided us.
Yeah, provided that they give you the information.
Of the people who told us. Sorry, you're, Dr. Brady, I misspoke. Twenty percent of BHUSD students have informed us that they have had COVID since December fifteenth.
Right.
I think the idea of the, uh, just to go back to the masks, I have never felt that outdoor masks. I mean, uh, this is one of the issues that I did not feel, they're outdoors. I mean, you know, you walk around and you don't have a mask on, you're, the air is around and so on. So I've often questioned the outdoor masking, but it's the one chance for the kids to feel like they have some freedom, some, to be at, to have some fun, to be able to be with and be outside. So as far as I'm concerned, I would like to look at that particular issue. That's one that I've really thought about quite a bit in the last few weeks. And now as possibly COVID is starting to turn the other direction, I think we can revisit that very easily.
Um, Rochelle, I totally agree with you. One concern I have is that we certainly want to minimize the amount of quote unquote yelling that any responsible yard aid has to do. And I'm concerned that some children, you know, maybe the under eight set, um, are going to be more impulsive and their way of playing, rightfully so, is to be pretty interactive and in your face. I think that it would really be unfortunate for those children to have to be snapped back into place because the yard aids or the, you know, the grownups are trying to be responsible. Um, and then they're going to be constantly sort of, um, you know, redirected. So I just, I just wonder, you know, we have to balance between, and I, this is a question for the administrators is, um, do you feel that if we were to try to do that, let's say they, they didn't have their mask and they had that, that freedom, um, do you feel that the average, um, six, or five, six, seven year old would be able to, um, obey, you know, their personal space bubble? Or do you think that that is, um, just an exercise in futility, right? Yeah, I know that age group. I mean, they're, they're precious, but they don't know their space yet. They're going to put their hands in people's faces as they should. I mean, in a way, that's how they're learning. Um, and I think it is perhaps damaging or counterproductive for them to be yelled at. Whereas, but then you have, right, I see what you're saying.
Or corrected. I think sometimes being corrected can feel yelled at, like I remember.
Well, I'm not talking about, you're talking, I'm talking about if it was the policy for everybody. You're talking about right now where kids are, uh, they're correcting each other right now with the masking, right?
Adults. I'm saying that if we wanted to let, um, I, I'm thinking that if we wanted to have students enjoy mask-free time, um, what is the cost though, given that developmentally, a lot of kids eight and younger are particularly impulsive in their unstructured free play? So do we want to entertain the idea that they don't have to wear a mask, but that might occasion a lot of correcting from adults, which is exhausting the staff and is demoralizing for the children when they are playing? That's, it's just a thought, so.
Well, I, I would imagine that if they're outside and they are able to be mask-free, that there would not be a lot of correcting. Are you talking about the fact that then all of a sudden you try to get them to put on the mask outside?
No, I'm saying that, that if we're trying to get them to be, um, you know, within a reasonable amount of space, you know, between each other in order to, to remain mask-free.
Well, you're talking about that they still would be somewhat spread out.
They would need to be, right? I mean, if I understand what, right? I mean, it's not just like, oh, go for it because you're outside. And I'm saying the, the very nature, I mean, just the other day I saw two girls reminded me of my own childhood of doing, and I, I, I'm really glad that they had their mask on only because it did not require any adult to step in and stop them, which is very sad during unstructured play to have your chosen, um, game to be disrupted because of that. So it's just, I'm just putting a thought out there. I would love the idea of, you know, as, as fewer masks, as few masks as possible, but I just wonder if it's going to, um, be, have a reverse effect, a negative effect because it's going to require a lot of inter, interruptions of play because kids have, little kids have a hard time maintaining that personal space. I don't know.
Gabe, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I have a lot to add, but I clearly have a lot of thoughts on the subject. Um, I wanted to remain quiet for a while and really listen to the conversation and listen to all my, uh, to fellow board members and their thoughtful questions and comments. Again, I'm, I'm just, I'm very appreciative that we're starting a conversation here and I hope we continue having this conversation. I think I feel, um, I am very passionate about the subject. One, because of the, the amount that I've heard from our community. I have four young kids myself and I just, uh, hearing the stories, I mean, I think I'm going to go to bed, you know, thinking tonight about the, the letter that Rivka wrote from one of our teachers. I, I'm, I'm like broken. We have, we have administrators here, we have board members here, we have our superintendent here. We don't have our teachers in the room. Um, and I think some of the other stories that we may hear from our teachers about the experience that our kids are having, would change some of the course of this conversation. But, um, Rebecca, you said twenty percent of our kids have reported having COVID since December fifteenth, correct? Are we aware, do we have any data of how many of those kids were hospitalized? Like how many of them had like really severe cases that they had to be hospitalized? Like, do we have any idea?
None to my knowledge that were reported to us.
Okay.
Um, that's not a question we ask of them.
Right. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm genuinely curious because I, I mean, let me state this. I, I put in the presentation that I put out there tonight, that the views herein are, are my own. But there are facts in there. The facts are the facts, okay? The survivability of this virus among children in California is ninety-nine point nine 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 percent. Children in California are not dying from this virus. Now, it may be scary to be hospitalized, but I think we, we've shown, I, I just encourage everyone to go back. I encourage all of my board members to go back and really look at the data that has been put in the presentation. Look at the citations, like really understand what's going on separate and apart from what the rules are that are being given to us. Because even though, Noah, please give me a chance. Even though I, e- even though there are rules and there are government agencies, I'm partially saying this as a lawyer, but more I'm saying this as an advocate for the children that cannot advocate for themselves, we have to put them first here. So that's why I suggested that we start, and what I would really like to hear from my board members and, and really understand is, as just a starting point for the discussion, do we think our children today, from this virus as it currently stands, are in danger? What, I, 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 do, do we believe that? Because I, I just, separate and apart from what the rules are, like I really want to understand what we believe the danger to be from our children from this virus, one. And then look at the measures that we're putting in place. There is real data, fifty percent increase in suicide, anxiety. We're, we're, we're hearing sob stories all over the place. We really like, I, I really would like to see us do an analysis of, do the pros of the, all the preventative measures we're taking, do they outweigh what the risks actually are to our children?
So it's, it's, I, I hear you loud and clear, Gabe. The one thing I, I, there's the measures that are put in place by the county, the mandates, right? Um, that there, there's, doesn't seem any way, they're not receptive to us getting around it. Um, I think the county, personally, I think the county should look at schools individually, look at case rates and say, hey, you know, this school has nothing more than a normal, you know, uh, case of the cold running through it. And it, and, and we should, they should understand that a little more than just labeling and, and slapping. I, I, I do get that and you heard me tonight. I am advocating for, for change where change is possible. Um, the issue that I, that I have though, and, and I absolutely, you know, I do this job because I care about the students and their success and their education. But anybody will tell you that rule number one on a school campus is safety. It's not academics, it's safety.
Agreed.
Okay. Not just the safety of the students. They don't live in a world of just kids. They interact with adults. And the problem with this virus is what it does to adults. So the concerns that I have in not just jumping in to say, hey, you know, screw all the, screw all the protocols, our kids are fine, they're going to be fine, is that the adults may not be. And those are not just the adults that they may carry at home too. Those are the ones that they're sitting in the classroom. Those are the ones that are in the, the main office. There's adults all over a school site. And I don't want to do something to, to risk them. You know, I don't, I wouldn't go so bold as to put our adults at risk. Um, but I, like I said, I'm happy to, to continue to discuss. I requested that we do this at the next board meeting to revisit, revisit the testing policy, revisit possibly what we can do with the outdoor masking. Now, outdoor masking is a county mandate. Right now it's a county mandate. It may not be next week, right? Omicron numbers will go. It wasn't before December. So I think, I think that's one, we have a pretty good chance of waiting that out and in a pretty short time, that's going to go away. That's my feeling about the outdoor. I don't know if that's a hill to die on, but we can pay close attention to that. Um, like I said, I want to take the onus off, off our administrators. I want them to get back to the business of education and not being, um, uh, you know, health providers. That's what's, that's what's happened in all this. But, but I, I do, I do hear you loud and clear. I hear your passion in your voice. I'm just, I'm a little more cautious. Maybe it's the years, not the miles, but I'm a little more cautious. And I also, you want to represent, like Rochelle said, the people that aren't speaking tonight. You want to make sure that you don't, in, in, you know, completely defy everything that you have supported that have made them feel comfortable being in this district, that have made, because way more people than those that have spoken tonight over the last two years have said, hey, you guys are doing a bang stellar job. Stellar job keeping us safe. Stellar job keeping us, keeping our schools. Stellar job keeping us safe, stellar job keeping us, keeping our schools open. You know, that's the line we do not want to cross. So whatever we start monkeying with, we have to make sure we can keep our schools open. That, that I think is, supersedes anything. I think kids would rather wear a mask and be in school than be at home without a mask on. That I can tell.
Can I, can I just reply to a couple of things real quick? Um, first of all, Noah, thank you. I'm hearing you loud and clear, and I've heard everyone on this board say that they are willing to look at, you know, existing policies we have and where we can start to, you know, you know, start to bend, use the data, do what we need to do to start easing this for our students. So I don't take that for granted for one second. Like I really appreciate the way that we're all thinking about this. I think we have definite, different definitions or um, different openness to how far we are willing to take this, right? And, and I'm, I, I personally, and I would, I would love to do this with the rest of the board. Um, I, I, I really want to do a risk analysis to understand what happens if we don't follow a mandate. Um, I want to, I'm sorry, I want to take a second to clarify something I said earlier too, because I got a, a text message on this. Um, to clarify what I said about Lily Bossi for a second, Lily is open to, and, and wants to. I think it's safe to say she wants to, create a new health department for the city of Beverly Hills. So to the extent that we do that and we can benefit from that, I think that's where the alignment, she's taking no position in terms of what we're doing in the schools. I just want to clarify that. Um, I think where I am willing to take this, because I think the data actually supports it. I think we at least have to look at taking that next step for our students, what that might look like. Um, if we push back against the, uh, against the county, because I think I've had the benefit of doing more research over the last seventy-two hours than the rest of the board. Um, I think we're sitting on a crisis that we're going to look back on this years from now and be like, how did we not see this? How were we in a position of power to do something and we didn't do more for our students at that time? I, I believe from the bottom of my heart that we will all be saying that years from now. So I want to put, that's what I meant by putting all options on the table. I don't disagree with you, there are risks. There will be challenges, but I think we at least have to take the next step and look at those. What we decide to do after we look at the data and understand what that is, is a different subject, but I think we at least have to look at that. I'm willing to take that step and I think we should be taking that step for our students. No one else is going to be doing that except for us, except for this governing body. No one is going to be pushing back. And I think we have to start pushing back. We, we have sat here saying we find certain rules hypocritical. We found certain rules are not making sense. We acknowledge it's having a psychological impact on our students, like what, if, if we're not going to speak up and start pushing back, who is going to do that? So I, I, I would like to do that. On, on the last subject that you brought up, sorry, you brought up two more things, risk to teachers. I completely agree, there's a risk to teachers. Thank God we have vaccines, thank God we have masks. Like I am not supporting one way or the other, people having a vaccine, not wearing masks, I mean, people should decide what their own risk tolerance is and they should protect themselves. Like I, 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 I'm one hundred percent supportive of anyone that wants to do anything to protect themselves and giving themselves some kind of optionality. The last thing was on unheard parents, and I think you bring up an excellent point. I was actually going to ask Rebecca, I had a note for this. Do we have the capability in our school district of taking a survey of parents and taking a survey of students to understand where their risk tolerances are, where their positions are on the side? Because I think you made an excellent point. Maybe I'm sitting in a microcosm. Like maybe, maybe all the parents that I'm talking to are just upset, but there's just as many stu, parents out there that are still completely terrified of the virus and, you know, think that it's actually deadly for their children. Which, you know, the data doesn't support, but they may be feeling that way. I do feel like there's some misinformation now, having dug into it myself on what the dangers of this virus actually, you know, are. So, sorry, I, we, we do have the capability?
Yes. Parent Square has the capability of taking polls and doing surveys and for any topic.
Yeah. So I, I think maybe that's something that we want to, to consider. I'm not saying that we should do that now. I'm sorry.
One, I think that's great, the idea of a survey. The problem is there's a certain sort of bias, because often, um, there, the people who respond are of a certain mindset or, or feel more strongly. I mean, there's a lot of, I think it's probably pretty hard to get a lot of parents to respond in general to surveys, would you say? Or, or not necessarily?
I think it was pointed out tonight, by the way, be, before you go, that all of the speakers and their passion and, and their thoughts were all definitely on, you know, on one side. We, so that's something you have to be very, I mean.
Yeah, you just have to make sure it's, it's a, a representative sampling of the population when there is, when there are respondents and some who don't respond. What were you going to say?
Uh, but I mean, we would make the survey available to, to everyone and I assume it would be a blind survey, so wouldn't that?
Right, but I'm saying, it's interesting because just as if you, at the genesis of Facebook, the start of Facebook, um, ten, fifteen years ago, the people who commented tended to have a negative bias. They wanted to say things when they were upset or they were angry. So sometimes the, the respondents, the people who choose to do the survey, um, are of a certain mindset. It's self-selecting kind of bias, um, but.
But, but to answer your question, I, I, I think it would be very high, because what, what has made this so difficult for us over the last two years is that every single family has a different viewpoint and they are from extremes to in the middle. And I think it, this has been, and I think you've heard teachers say this too, um, it's been mentally exhausting because of all the emotions that, that come with it. So, um, and, and while I do think that that would be a very high percentage of those, uh, returning. Um, you know, there's, there's also, we just need to set some expectations as well, as far as, you know, what we're going to do with the information. I, I think doing the, the risk analysis is, um, uh, we need to do that regardless to, to see what that, you know, by not complying. Um, you know, and again, I don't know what it will say, uh, because we're, you know, we're in the middle and it's, uh, you know, it's all over the place. So, and while that would be interesting to know, um, you know, there's, the people that take surveys uh, often demand, whichever way it goes, you know, that there's action afterwards.
And I would think that there are others in the other seventy-eight school districts in the county, there are probably a host of others that might feel the same way that, that Gabe is expressing tonight. Um, they haven't acted maybe for a lot of reasons on it. They are dealing with other things. They don't have the resources we do, so they're, they're tripping, uh, over themselves, um, through this process. But it would be interesting to know if there were other districts that are like ours with lower numbers, with, with, that, that are interested in having this conversation. Because then you start getting more support in the county.
Right. I mean, I would also say, I mean, what, what we're talking about is, is the diversity also in our population. And there, that, there are, everybody has an opinion and, uh, di- differing opinions, which is not a reason not to explore.
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, what our options are down the road. This is going to continue on. We're going to have many more conversations about this. So it's really about what is our approach to, to adhering to the protocols? Uh, where do we extend them or, or, or try and minimize them? And if we get to places where we just completely disagree, um, really thinking ahead, what would we do, what could we do? And are there things now that we might even want to consider doing, doing something about? I think all three of those scenarios really matter and I think that, um, you know, my recommendation would be that we in the areas where we can do something within the protocols, we should absolutely look at that, because we're in a different place right now. And, and, and it's continuing to go down. So if that's looking at testing, if that's looking at, um, you know, how we're contact tracing to the extent that there's any wiggle room in there, wherever we can minimize and, and also, um, and how we are communicating, uh, with the students and with the families and trying to also minimize the level of extraneous work that it's causing for our teachers and admin and staff. I think we should absolutely do that right now. I think, and then in terms of your question of what can we do that's more than that, I think we should look at that. But look at it in terms of what are our options and how might we go about approaching that? Because we may be at that place when vaccines come around as, are they going to be mandatory? Are we going to, going to look at that? Are we going, going to want to have a conversation about that? But, and also keeping in mind that we are addressing the needs of the entire school community and all students and their safety. Um, and, and, and so knowing that, how do we go ahead and approach that? And I, I do think it's worthwhile to, uh, look into that.
And also just, you know, considering, uh, as Mr. Margot mentioned, you know, just with our employees, because we do have an MOU that's in place. Um, we were on full virtual learning, um, you know, teachers and staff looking at working conditions um, in order to feel safe to come back, that that MOU has grown and changed several times over the last couple of years. Um, but that is an agreement that we have in place, uh, where employees feel safe to come back to work as well. So we need all of our adults, uh, to run our schools.
Right. So there's many, many things to consider, not just, uh, the county department of public health.
And just on the testing, um, if we want to formalize, if, if we get directed, direction from you to formalize any sort of change in the testing, I just want to be transparent that the contract needs a one month heads up. So any change will happen a month from when that formalized action takes place.
Okay, that's great to know.
Yep.
You know, one thing I wanted to say is I really hope that just as the, the flu virus, um, has become, if I, I hope I'm using this word correctly, it has become endemic. In other words, it is something that we know is widespread among the human population. Um, it can be fatal. Uh, it is generally, I believe, not terribly fatal. Um, mortality rates for children, uh, with the flu, to my knowledge, is, is pretty small. But just as we have, as a population, accepted that the flu is an endemic part of our everyday, uh, society, there is a flu vaccine. It is not mandatory at schools. But I wonder, as this virus has become, um, perhaps a little more tame, at least in this iteration, thankfully. I mean, will the, the LA Department of Public Health, will everyone as a whole start to see that this is something that in fact is not as deadly as we had feared, um, two years ago? And that, um, we could take similar measures as we do with the flu, which I have not yet heard of a case in which an entire school was shut down because of a flu outbreak. So I'm, I'm just saying that if there is a way that eventually, um, the, the forces that be come to see that this is endemic and not an epidemic, I wonder if.
I, 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 on that note, I mean, I, I've, I've been reading a lot about that as well and I think it might also be another thing to consider in, in terms of having a speaker come and talk about what, where they think the virus is going. Um, because, uh, that's, that's a really important conversation that's going on right now and I don't have that expertise. I've, you know, I've read different things, but we could have, um, not necessarily at the board meeting, but it could just be a parent, community information where we have a guest speaker that can speak about, you know, exactly that topic and where they see it going, or maybe have a couple of different speakers at different times. So one week it could be a one speaker and then, and another can have, another week, we can just have a series of speakers talking about that. Um, as, something to consider as we're, we're going forward. It might be, it may not be the, um, task force. It's just bringing in different speakers where someone can speak, just as a speaker series for parents and the community.
Uh, I shared my screen again because I'm a doctor and started talking about the flu and the comparisons to where COVID is right now and the flu, and I just wanted to bring up the slide again. Again, this is, this is data from the CDC, um, how the more, how the mortality rate to COVID uh, between, you know, over the course of generally the last year, how that stacks up to deaths from the flu among kids. I mean, the data speaks for itself and I think I'm, I'm, sorry if I'm getting a little, you can see me getting a little passion heated because I have poured myself into the data. So I have, I have a few suggestions that I want to make in terms of next steps just to feel the temperature of the, of the board in terms of where we're going. Um, I think we're generally aligned in terms of what I put here. In terms of what is strict compliance, like we're not going to, we're, we're not willingly or knowingly going to go out of compliance with what the LA County Board of, uh, Public, I screw that, I screw that up every single time. You know who I'm talking about? Um, County Board of Health, wha- whatever their name is, we're going to be in compliance today. We're not, we're not changing that. We're going to start looking at where we can start applying some of our discretion, right? On some of the outdoor, where can we, where can we, you know, where, where is there room for us to change the paradigm a little bit? One of the things that we, that talked about today that I wasn't even aware of is that the weekly testing that we're doing is not actually required. Like that, that is, that is an area that we may decide that we want to change our strategy. So let's start, I think, looking at those areas. Third, um, I would like to start looking at weighing all of the options, right? And I've made clear what those, you know, what those areas are. So I guess my, my, my ask walking out of here if, you know, if the board is comfortable with this guidance is, I, I would like to set up a closed session to start looking at, you know, specifically, you know, um, risk, uh, the areas that I think maybe not, may not be appropriate for, uh, a discussion in open. But also set up another follow-on study session to this in open, where, you know, now that I've uploaded a bunch of data, like it's out there, I'll share this deck with whoever wants to see it. We can, we can put it on the, uh, agenda site or wherever for the community to look at it. I, I'm very open to, to data from anybody. If anyone would like to send me data for me to better understand this issue, I'm open to it. I think the rest of the board is as well. I think I would like to see the, the, the board have an opportunity. And we just decided to have this meeting on Friday, we're here on Tuesday, like we're, we're, you know, this is all moving fast, which I think is great. I think we need to act quickly and move quickly for the benefit of our students. But I want to give the rest of my board members the opportunity to look at some of this data, the same way that I have, to come to some of their own conclusions on what risks are posed to our children on both sides, from COVID and then from all of these measures that are, that are, that are, that are, that are being implemented. So we can start, you know, framing the discussion maybe a little bit differently in terms of where we have to go next. I think engaging speakers is a great idea for the next study session. I think potentially hearing from more of our teachers in the next study session. And I think word is going to start getting out to the community that this is an issue that we're looking at very closely. So, um, i- if, you know, if anyone that feels differently from the way that I feel or other views that have been expressed by other parents tonight, if they'd like to send me an email, I will keep it confidential. I will never release who it was from. But just to express some different opinions to better educate me, I just want to go on record and say I'm very open to that. I, I really want to better understand this issue. I want to make the best decisions we can for our students. So I guess it would be those three things. We start kind of looking at where we can apply our discretion. We, we have a closed session. And then third, we, we have a follow-on study session to this where, uh, we, we may even consider, I would be very open to doing a survey of the community to see also where they stand. We can agree on certain facts to provide, to make available. I mean, I'm, I'm very open to that. Maybe, maybe that's a topic we talk about in our next study session.
Well, I did bring up before and I'll just remind everybody, I, on the, our meeting on February eighth, we should at least visit the policy. We can put that on the agenda. The testing policy, bring in data and have a conversation, follow up. Don't know if we're going to make any decisions, but by, at least by getting on the agenda, we can start the conversation.
And what about the outdoor masking? Because a lot of people keep bringing that up. Where are we with that now?
Right now, it's a county requirement.
So they can actually shut us down, is that correct?
Can we be shut down if there are, um, there are folk, uh, kids who are not wearing their mask outside?
So, you know, it, it used to be in the beginning where, you know, there was, there was, um, you know, there was direct mandates, you know, you must. You know, there was trigger words like that. Um, now you can see, you know, and this is the first time, um, you know, that, that there's ever been some sort of, um, alignment with what is happening in the state of California and LA County. Because before, LA County was always more restrictive than the state. Um, and now we're start, starting to see this, this alignment. Um, if, if, if there is, if somebody makes a, again, these are hypotheticals. If somebody makes a report and says that, um, you know, that they, they are not, they don't see that, that we're maintaining, um, physical distancing with our kids outside, you know, in, you know, at, uh, one of our elementary schools. You know, somebody could make that report and as I mentioned before, they follow up on, on, on those reports. Um, you know, and, you know, they investigate those reports. We have been, you know, very, um, compliant with, when, when the county is coming to our schools, um, and we, we have, you know, made whatever we need to do in any situation, if, if there was something that we needed to improve, um, many times it was just somebody that was mad. Um, and then they would investigate in. what we were doing was fine. But, you know, there will be that investigation. So, it goes back to that risk again, you know, does, you know, is this something where the county will say, over an issue like this, you know, we're going to close you down? They don't tell you that. They don't, they don't share that, but the expectation is that, you know, at this point, that we do follow this. I don't know anybody that has pushed that to a point where, you know, they have to make a decision about you staying open or not. We have just followed the expectations, because they said we have to demonstrate that we are following the health order, and if we don't, you know, we are not going to be able to stay open. Can you push that, you know, under the direction of the board? You know, we would, you know, we would do that.
Rebecca, were you gonna add something?
I can read you the section.
Sure, thank you.
So, they updated the language recently. Universal masking with some appropriate type of face covering is still currently required for both indoor and outdoor settings on the school campus. Exceptions would include when actively eating or drinking, and in outdoor settings where physically distance, physical, I beg your pardon, physical distancing can be reliably maintained. And so, that's where I would defer to our administrators, to see what can be reliably maintained in terms of physical distancing, if we wanted to remain compliant, as Dr. Bugby said. I'm not sure what happens. I don't know who locks up the door if we don't, if we're not compliant, I'm not sure.
I mean, I would say that, that's a question, like, for me, just off the top of my head, I know when I see kids together at school, like, they're huddled up, they're talking, they're on each other, they're hugging each other, or they're playing basketball, or they're playing sports, or there are kids that are up on their own, doing their own thing. You have, you have a mix of everything, and I think that the question becomes, what is the cost-benefit analysis for the kids? What's the cost-benefit analysis for the admin and the additional, you know, enforcing that compliance? Are there ways to address that, that we, that can ease that? But we have to consider all of those different scenarios. So, I think that that is, that's further discussion, in my opinion. I think the testing, we can, we can address that immediately and reevaluate where we are on the testing, but I think we should continue, we should talk with the principals or the different school sites, and it's also different at different ages. So, I think it's really, do they have recommendations of ways to help alleviate the outdoor masking that's not gonna create tons more work for you, but also is able to help address that? Is it, I'm not sure the solution, I would defer to you to see if there's any obvious answers to that as a next step. And then, with regard to wanting to look at, how do we take bolder steps against the county? I think that that's a, I think that's another conversation for us. I think we can, you know, I think it's gonna change. So, I, we can have another study session, or we can have a closed session if we need to talk about any issues that we need to consider from a legal standpoint, or what have you, first, and then, and then talk about that. My suggestion would be that we start with what legal barriers we're hitting first, as a starting place, just to see what that looks like, and then take it from there.
So, I think, I think the important thing is to not use the words "against the county" and pushback. I think it's, let's work with the county, you know? Let's, let's, let's be positive about this and say, hey, look, we got this thing under control, we're managing it, let's get some parameters and places for schools like us that we can kind of get more back to normal because of the way we've handled things.
And I think that's Rebecca's mantra as well.
Right, exactly. So, I just think that the tone of the conversation has to be, let's work with the county. I don't want to work against the county, because if they're the ones with the keys, right, at night, that's, you know, you don't, you don't, you don't pick a fight like that.
I also want to mention, too, that it's, it's pretty tragic, for lack of a better word, that, you know, like, the outdoor trip that was scheduled for the eighth graders for Big Bear, I mean, that's tremendously disappointing. And I'm not, I understand that it probably could have been really untenable to try to, I guess, you know, navigate who's, you know, we don't want anyone to, you know, spread COVID on the trip, but it's just, it just has to be said that it is really, really sad and disappointing for, that we, that these kids can't have that. And I just, if we can think about policies or ways to be flexible, moving forward with such amazing trips that really put our district on the map for these types of things, it'd be great, but I know it's not easy, and there's a lot of moving parts, but that was unfortunate. I feel for those kids and their families.
And can I also say that that decision didn't come easy? And because, because we've been, you know, doing this for two years, and it's wearing on us, we're teachers, we're educators, we're principals, you know?
And to be the bearer of the values.
Very, very difficult, but we also have a responsibility, you know, just the week before last, you know, at Hawthorne, we've got two classrooms, we're actually closing under the direction of the county because of three epidemiologically linked cases. So, it's also that responsibility of having, you know, you know, the outcome of, you know, students being unmasked during the surge, because it's all a timing thing, is to then come back, that could possibly, you know, as quickly as, you know, the decision that Culver City unified, because it was so out of control, you know, because it was a Big Bear trip. You know, that's a lot of responsibility for us to take on, to potentially, you know, and again, we have to make our best judgment. You know, I know that we've had discussions about, you know, it's, of course, it's never the same, but, but, you know, what can we do that's equally is an opportunity for social, like, it's not about taking it away, it's about what can we do differently? And I know that Dr. Skon's already starting to have conversations with the kids, like, what do you want to do? What do you, like, because they, we need them to buy into it as well.
I think that's a good point. I think it's hearing from the different school sites and what your recommendations are. I think one of the things that really resonates with me is when we look at the data, and I've seen that, you know, these numbers as well, and I think the thing that really hits home for me is that, yes, the kids, the children, by and large, have been the least affected by COVID, but then the fact of them bearing that, you know, bearing that burden for the rest of the adults and everybody else, it seems like, yes, there's going to be some sort of fallout for that, and that's really, really, that really resonates for me about how unfortunate that is, and how it seems unfair, and it seems long-term that we're gonna have consequences for that. So, to whatever extent that we can alleviate that, I think we should always be looking at it in that way, and not get complacent. But, and, and to be fair, I don't think that we've been complacent. I think that as we have taken each of these steps, we have gotten together, we have considered our school and our community with the desire that we are able to keep our school open, have teachers at school, and supporting staff, and have our students be able to be in a classroom. And I think we've done that very well, and every step that we've taken has been difficult, because it is a new environment, it's a new set of challenges, and some of the same challenges continue on as, as we've been talking about. It doesn't seem fair for the kids, it doesn't, you know, there's a lot of things that continue on, but we still have to address, this is where we are today, and how do we best achieve our goals? And I think that we've been very mindful about doing that. I think we do look at the data we have, and we make the decisions that we think are right for us, where we are, given all the other constraints we have to consider. And I appreciate your presentation, Gabe, I appreciate you bringing that focus back to us, especially after coming back from, from the break and being in the midst of Omicron, I think it's a great reminder for us to come back to that. Let me let Eli speak, thank you.
Thank you. So, this was actually, I'd like to bring up an idea that Mrs. Marcus brought up very early on, and that's the under-representation of views during public comment and overall. I hope my mic's on, I think it is. Perfect, thank you. So, also, an idea of a survey, something that I've been thinking of for quite a while, particularly of students, because they are a population that we have not heard of. We've heard a lot of parents speaking for students, and maybe those are elementary school students, so that would make some sense, but we haven't heard a lot from middle and high school students that do have the ability to advocate for themselves and relay their own thoughts and ideas regarding the current situation. So, I've been thinking about the possibility of an, almost a student-administered survey from the ASBs at the high school and the middle school, or a cooperation between the two that I could help coordinate. I know at the high school, or one of the issues that we had talked about before with a survey, is the lack of responses that we may get, because generally, the more passionate people are the ones who decide to fill out surveys, so that may skew our data a bit. I know particularly at the high school, we have our Norman Connection time, which is a video shown by ASB at the start of third period on odd days and fourth period on even days, and during that time, there could be an announcement from ASB throughout, saying, please check your emails, there is a survey, you're instructed, you have this time to go fill it out. I'm not sure if the middle school has something similar, but they may be able to find time at the start of one of those class periods to allow teachers to have their students take that survey, just to ensure that we have the largest amount of data possible, because, like Mr. Holimi continues to bring up, students are the most important members of our education system, and we are here to advocate for them and to ensure that they have the best time and the safest time that they can have. So, I'll be starting to work on that probably tomorrow during my ASB period, and then hopefully working with the ASB advisors at the high school and the middle school, and then the, also the admin teams, to see if we can facilitate, one, some kind of time for students to fill out the survey, as well as a way to send the survey to all the students who would be filling it out.
Eli, thank you. You're absolutely right. This is all about you and the rest of the students in the school district. So, I think having the voice of the, you know, students is part of this conversation, having the voice of the teachers, you know, we have the voice of many of our administration here would be very welcome. My strong gut here is that if you put out a survey to the students, and you put out a survey to the parents of the school district on this issue at this time, when we have, whether you're strongly in favor of all the protections that we've put in place, and think they're absolutely necessary, to all the way on the other side, if you think it's absolute nonsense, take all the masks off, I think people have been kind of dealing with enough, right, that I think you're gonna get a strong response on both sides. That's my, you know, that's my gut. So, I would, I personally would very much welcome that at the student level and at the teacher level. Just to, just to put, I mean, my goal for tonight, let me just say, was to do exactly what we're doing. We're starting a conversation, we're laying a foundation for how we start making decisions going forward, and we start looking at all the options, which I, which is, I think, what we're, what we're aligning on doing. So, I, there are a number of things I'd like to talk about closed, that I don't want to, you know, talk about here, but I think we have some consensus that we, that we should have a closed session meeting to talk about risks on all sides here. And I would, and I would love to get another study session scheduled, if that's what comes out of tonight, and we're gonna have the conversation at the next board meeting.
Well, I think we'll follow up on the timing for those things, and, but I think for sure we'll move forward, trying to put this on the agenda for February 8th. And I would like to, if nobody has, go ahead, Eli.
Thank you. Just forgot to mention it, in terms of the survey, of course, all the results from that would be shared during a board report at one of our regular meetings, or if we end up having another study session, and we have the results from that survey, and we're able to get it out, then, that could be shared then. So, whenever, they, of course, would be reported to the board, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Can I make, can I make one suggestion, Eli?
Of course.
But obviously, it's totally up to you how you want to handle it. I do think that it's very important to word things in surveys, you know, to the right way. You know, you word things one way, you could get some results on it. I would encourage, if we would spend time, but together, whenever we do want to craft a survey, I see Rebecca nodding her head very hard, I think we should work together on putting that language, so it's like, very clear, and whatever results we're getting from that survey, it's something that we can trust and actually make actionable for our community. So, I encourage us to really work through, work through Rebecca.
As the idea of the survey came up, that was the question that I had. In my mind, is that a survey can always be worded in such a way that you get what you're looking for, or you don't get what you're looking for, but you have to be very careful about the wording, because surveys can be very, very misleading, and can lead you in totally different ways, so...
And just the timing as well, you know, like, we don't want to, we don't want to send something out to students that our parents and our staff haven't had a chance to look at, but I think it's a coordinated effort, and I think that we all agree that we can work on that.
Is that something that maybe, Gabe, you'd like to work on with Eli, maybe, and that's something you can, and Rebecca, and you can, and then bring it to the board? Or Rochelle, if you're interested in that as well?
Was the question posted?
If you'd like to work with them on preparing that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mary.
I was, I was suggesting that perhaps that Gabe and Eli with Rebecca, and you as well, if you're interested in that, work on that survey, and then we can bring it back to the board to look at.
Everybody on the right side, everybody on the right side of the dais is on the survey ad hoc committee, thank you very much.
Okay. I suggest you do that.
The ball and told is what you call it.
Did you have a comment?
Could site administrators approach the podium for two minutes before we leave?
Please.
Of course.
Now?
Yes.
Sure.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. We would love nothing more than to be here all night long.
Well, if I had my way, you would be.
The disco ball's gonna drop in 10 minutes.
Okay, quick introductions, Craig Bugby-Horace Man.
Kelly Skon, Beverly Vista Middle School.
I'm Sarah K. Rob, I'm the principal at Hawthorne.
And I'm Drew Stewart, one of the assistant principals at the high school.
I'm Mark Siffett.
And Mark, go.
Hey, everybody, I'm Mark Bean, I'm still here.
Thank you. We've been waiting for an opportunity to do this for a while, and I think this is the perfect opportunity. I believe it was Dr. Stern that said, Rebecca, I don't know how you retain all of this information. This has been an insane year for all of us, or two years. Site administrators are really struggling to get through the day, because we're not doing what we signed up for, what our true passion is. There is one person who has answered every phone call, every single text, has all of the information we know. We would like to, as a site administrator team, publicly acknowledge and thank Rebecca Starkins.
I will join you with that. I, when Gabe mentioned something about having an expert on COVID, I thought immediately, we have that person. Her name is Mrs. Starkins, whether or not that was actually her job title, she has stepped into that role and has done such a stellar job, and when you said that maybe they would need help, I thought, maybe she does. So, it is, my hat goes off to you, you've just really stepped into this in such a remarkable way, and, and everybody appreciates it so much, I know this board does.
And while the spotlight is on you, Happy Australia Day.
The initiative, and the initiative of getting into immediately the situation, understanding it, and taking action is unbelievable, and I just want to comment on that also. She is right there on the spot, and she works hours and hours and hours behind the normal person's job. There's, she must have a 23 out of 24-hour workday, because I don't know how she does.
Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. She answers whenever we call.
We're lucky to have you, Rebecca.
Rebecca, thank you, and while you guys are all standing up here, really thank you guys, too. This is not the job, this is not the job that you guys, that you guys signed up for, we know that. You guys are tasked with an impossible situation, being boots on the ground with the parents, with the students, every single day, and just, just really thank you. We're really trying to hopefully provide some clarity and get us back to, you know, life, I think is what we all want to do.
And we know how lucky we are in this district, so, thank you very much. If nobody else has any other comments, I would like to adjourn the meeting, it's, anybody have any comments, last chance?
I just want to say thank you again to my fellow board members for agreeing to do this, and for what we're starting to do here, really thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Okay, then I am going to adjourn this meeting, it is 8:18, 8:23, I'm correcting that, it's 8:18? Okay, thank you. Good night, everybody, thank you so much for staying for so long. Good night, everybody, thank you so much for staying for so long.